Committee meeting of Foxborough, one of our regular meetings of October 1, 2012, to order. The agenda will be visitors, approval of minutes, teaching and learning highlights, reflections on elementary summer math initiative, elementary math report card update, school and culture climate goals review of the draft, acceptance of a donation, Massachusetts School Building Authority funding update, school committee discussion of TERF's upfield project, a school committee vote to appoint voting delegate for the MATH annual meeting in November, and other matters. Any visitors? Being none, let's go to the minutes, for approval of minutes.
I just have one correction. Wendy, I apologize for not calling you because I just saw it now. On the second page, under other matters. I don't think my husband was here that night.
You want one?
Oh, Mr. Mr. Slattery. In spirit, he follows you.
No, he's probably not even watching, so.
Make a motion for the amendment?
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Tina. All in favor? Five zero zero. Teaching and learning highlights, reflections of elementary summer math initiative. Mrs. Mello.
Come on up. And I'm going to turn this right over to Dr. Burgos to explain why we thought this would be a good beginning of the year of teaching.
We have traditionally thought of summer learning as math, as reading. It's like your summer reading books, and the emphasis pretty much has been on reading every summer. With the new framework, and what you'll hear a lot more specifically on the transitions that we see in math, there really is a need for summer learning to extend past summer reading in order to fight against regression over the summer with students. And in order to do that, we need to look at what we're doing for math as well as reading. So with the new framework and the focus on math fact fluency and automaticity, being able to recall facts and then problem solving, Ms. Mello, along with teachers, devised a new program last year, well, not necessarily a new program, but looking at math facts and a fluency plan for really holding students and a fluency plan for really holding students accountable and so they will know what the expectation is with fact fluency. And that followed into the summer. And not only did it follow into the summer, but it provided parents many different ways for their children to access different apps, different online programs, and they had a lot of choice. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Mello and let her explain a little bit more about what happened this summer.
And you're going to be my clicker person for the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Great. Okay, so you did a nice job introducing the rationale for the Math Fact Summer Program. In the past, for people who may not know, in the summer, we have offered sort of a calendar that was a menu of math problems. You guys probably remember that from the middle school. And those problems were sort of a mixed review of skills taught during the year. And our participation was lower than we would have liked. And I think we spent some time talking to the teachers about what could be really meaningful to have the students work on in the summer, keep them engaged, avoid regression, and actually impact the classroom so that they could come back being stronger than they left. So this was sort of our little experiment. So why did we focus on math facts? Well, based on our assessment data, we could see that math facts continue to be a challenge for some of our students. And that's a really important thing because research shows that math fact fluency is a key indicator for future success in mathematics, and it's a critical underpinning for accessing more critical, I mean, more complicated math concepts. So that's an important piece. Also, with the adoption of the new Massachusetts curriculum frameworks that incorporates the Common Core state standards, there is an expectation of mastery of addition and subtraction facts by the end of second grade, which means we're no longer supposed to be instructing on it in grade three. And there's also a similar expectation at the end of grade four for multiplication and division. So what our data showed us about retention of math facts, we were giving timed tests before, and if, you know, you had students in the district several years ago, they took math fact tests all the time. And in spite of that, we were still seeing that the students still didn't know their facts. They weren't retaining them. They were still counting on their fingers, and they really did not have that automatic recall. When it came time to compute with large numbers and counting was no longer practical, they really ran into some difficulties because you only have so many fingers to count on, and it's pretty easy to lose track. We saw that students did not have the understanding of number relationships that we would like them to have, and also that the Common Core would like them to have, understanding how numbers relate to each other. So for example, if you forget a fact, if you're a first grader and you forget eight plus seven, but you know seven plus seven is fourteen, and you know eight is one more, knowing that relationship can help you get there really quickly without having to count on. We also showed, saw that addition is not being mastered by the end of second grade like we need it to be, and multiplication was not being mastered by the end of fourth grade. So this is something we spent a lot of time looking at. So what the research says is that number relationships provide the foundation for strategies that help students remember basic facts. So as Dr. Burdocks mentioned, last year, we implemented a fact fluency program. We started in January, a little later than we would have liked, but we had rolled out the Common Core. That focuses on different strategies, like the one I just mentioned, doubles plus one, that helps students understand the number relationships before they get to the facts. Fact acquisition is so important that the NCTM, the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics, identified the development of math facts in elementary school as a focal point for grades one through four. And they talk about the acquisition of basic math facts happening in the following three phases, probably not the way we learned them, because I had my coffee can and my flashcards, and we had to memorize them. But phase one is constructing meaning and having strategies so that you really gain numeracy and you understand numbers. The next one is reasoning strategies. Well, if I don't have it immediately, what do I know? What do I have to fall back on even if I forget? And then the last phase is working toward quick recall, once you have all those other things under your belt. So this is just an example of the new second grade content standard. And you can see that by the end of grade two, students must know from memory all sums of one-two digit numbers. And if you look at the bottom, they reference back to the grade one standard for a list of mental strategies, again, that focus on conceptualization and strategies. For grade four, similar, using place value understanding and properties of operation to perform multi-digit arithmetic. And then at the bottom, no multiplication facts and related division facts through twelve times twelve, something that's a standard. So with all of that information and the constant conversations we've had about math facts, we devised our action plan, which you gave a nice overview to. So last January, we incorporated strategy instruction into the math classroom, and we are using a program called the Box of Facts, which you've probably heard about before. It complements the Think Math program beautifully and gives lots of games and practice for students to see those number relationships. It's not about just hitting flashcards over and over. It's about understanding the numbers. It also, we also have a push to make number relationships explicit in our daily instruction. And we actually established proficiency goals for each quarter, so students knew that they were on the right track in advancing their knowledge. In order to monitor that, we have quarterly assessments now that we are giving. The next part is what I hear about today. We redesigned our summer math program to provide this ongoing support and practice for students so that they could continue to work on mastery, and so we could send the message that this is really important. So our goals for the summer math program were, of course, to strengthen number relationships and math fact fluency through conceptual representations and strategy practice. And then the second part of that was, it's summer. We wanted to make it fun. We wanted to make it engaging. We wanted kids to want to do it. So with that in mind, and thinking about where, what we're competing with, with kids, with technology and video games and what they like to do on their cell phones, we figured we would try to offer some technology solutions. So we had a website option. That was actually a subscription that we purchased for students to go on and have their profile and have like a password so they could go in. In addition to that one, there were other websites that they could go to play, and there were games to reinforce. Then there were a selection of apps that could be used on the iPad, iPhone, iPod, all the I's. And then if students, for a lower tech option, because not everybody has access to those things, we offered strategy cards. And I, I'm picky about the language. It doesn't say flashcards. It says strategy cards because the cards actually explicitly show the strategy on them, so the kids can understand them. So parents got a packet like this, and they could choose their option. And then depending on what option they chose, they got information. They got the list of websites, which ones were required, and then what they had to do. Because part of this, for me, was tracking how often the students went on, how they performed, and checking in to see how they did. So for the website option, the one that was required, the website did it for us, which was great. I could log in and see how students were progressing. I could make a comment. For the apps, I had a really good time going through about 3,000 math apps to see which ones would be conceptual, because a lot of them are not, and came up with this list. The one that was required did have the strategy with it. And we set up some email accounts, just Gmail accounts, so that students could email their results, so that I could track that way, and then let the kids know and send them back a message saying, you know, "Good job. Keep up the good work," et cetera. And then the last one are the strategy cards. And this is kind of hard to see, but they use ten frames and dice models so students can see a representation. And this one is five plus seven, and it says, "Strategy: Doubles plus two. Think five plus five plus two more." So, and then there were some directions on how to use the strategy cards. So parents receive this, the choice selection in May, and then the follow-up in June. And I will be the first to admit, this was a new initiative, and it was rushed at the very end. So some of them maybe didn't quite make it home in the backpack or made it in the backpack, but never made it out. But it was our first stab at it. Okay, so that's a better example that you can see. The one on the left is an app called Sushi Monster, and the kids can do addition or multiplication on that. And the idea is to make combinations of numbers on the sushi to feed the sushi monster the product or the sum. Kids love that game. It is very fun. I got emails from parents saying, "This is a great game. My kids really like this a lot." And the one on the right is Hungry Fish, trying to make combinations that add up to that number or multiply to that number. Again, we want kids to see how to take numbers apart and put them back together. And then in the middle, you can see the strategy card there. For parents who maybe didn't get this home in the backpack, we also had all of this available on our website, on the summer math link, which is on the Foxborough Math Challenge page. So they could print out the apps, the overview, everything that went home was available there. And I set up a different email address for those people so I could track them separately. And I did get some inquiries over the summer from parents saying, you know, "I didn't get this. I heard it on the soccer field." And so I was able to direct them to our website. So overall participation, this was our first time doing this, and we had the three options. So that just gives you an idea of how many people enrolled and then the percent of results that were reported. So I will just say, the strategy cards have dashes because for those, I didn't have an electronic way to track them. People had to hand in a log. So the data was kind of soft. I'm not exactly sure. But for the others, I could actually check in. And the one thing that I will say is that I think when people signed up, it's the beginning of the summer, and you know, we're excited, and we're going to do it, and then, doesn't always happen because, you know, summer's a busy time. So we're just hoping next summer that our numbers continue to go up a little bit and that we get the message out. And that's part of the reason why we're here tonight. The feedback that I got from parents, and I'll let you take a look at it, I won't read it, but it was overwhelmingly positive. And it's great that parents took the time to provide feedback. There's one more slide of a couple of feedback pieces that I received. I like the one on the bottom. My son was moaning a bit about doing the other day, and my daughter, who will be in fourth and has always struggled to retain math facts, says, "No, this has been great. I really improved with my math facts, and I've never been this good before." That was great. Just to get one of those would have been great, and we actually got several. So it's very encouraging. And as I said, I think the more that we talk about this and people understand how it's different from it was when we were kids, the more participation that we'll get.
Could students participate and then just not submit?
Absolutely. So it's quite possible that there were people who didn't email their results. The only one that's the exception to that is the website that we subscribe to, because if they were on it, I could see it. And if they weren't, then I could see that too. So I was just, for my own curiosity, we're giving a baseline assessment in September. And I had this grandiose idea that all the kids were going to do this, and then we're going to see this great result, and that will happen, just not yet, but it will happen. But I wanted to see the correlation between the practice, especially in the modes that they like, the websites and the games, and if we see an improvement in their scores and the retention. That's the really important thing.
I just have to add, as far as the behind-the-scenes work, when Allison talks about all of those letters that she showed that came in, if you went into her room, she had huge signs that said, "Under construction." In other words, nobody better mess with the papers on the floor.
Well, because they would get thrown away, I'd be afraid.
All of these stacks to really make sure that she was meeting the needs of each child that sent this in. And some of those comments really speak to the communication that she had with parents. But it was very specific to students, and it was, it was a lot of work to get it up and running. But it was ongoing too, from her end.
Well, and I learned a lot about how to do it much better and more efficiently next time. But we're growing.
What a great idea. Now I know what the moaning and groaning was about, because we have a granddaughter that was involved with this.
Yes, you do.
Maybe we need to send home notes to the grandparents so they don't misplace or lose the pamphlet. That was a little bit of panic one day, like, who's got the booklet? What booklet?
Yes. Well, because each pamphlet had a sticker on it with their login and their password, so they did have to remember that.
So we just, but what a great idea. I, I'm just curious, you know, across the state, is math an ongoing issue still?
Oh, yes. Yeah.
I just don't, you know, I look back at the way we did math, and I look at how we push and shove and move ahead, and are we moving too fast for kids everywhere?
Well, I think that's what the Common Core is saying. Take time, slow down, and master these ideas before you move them ahead. And I think if we're honest, we were pushing before, not we, just as Foxborough, but as a nation. Third grade, multiplication. If they have not mastered addition, they should not be doing multiplication. So that's why it's important to take the time and really help them to understand it. So yeah, I would say that I feel very excited that we're starting to see progress, moving in the right direction. Some of the things the kids say blow my mind and what they're understanding. And I have this hope that, I know so many adults, if we polled 100 adults, how many of them hate math? A lot. And they didn't like their experience.
Probably have ninety-nine.
That's right.
No, seriously.
That we're going to change. And people say that's not how I learned it, but how I learned it made me not really like it so much, and maybe I didn't like it because I didn't get it. So that's what we're hoping to change. And I feel like we're moving in the right direction.
Yeah, I remember in grade school, if you thought for one minute you wouldn't master something for Mrs. Barrow, you were dreaming. You know, I mean, you just, but it was rote memory, it was, you know, the flashcards. And the same way we, we send home kids with the, you know, the, it.
The sight word.
The sight, it was the sight words. And it's, it's almost like we have to go back to something like that.
There has to be some accountability.
There has to be some accountability.
Right.
But I just, you know, I hear from everybody, from my patients, about their kids and how everybody, I'm like, what is this state doing that nobody is getting on top of this? I just don't understand.
So I feel like the amount of energy we've put into it and now having the, the tests and then the next frontier is just continuing the dialogue so people understand how important it is and why it's so important for future progress.
You know, but you, you do have, it gives you pause for thought, the people that are recommending, you know, you have to do this, you have to do that, but they're not looking back at the results and trying to understand, maybe we can't achieve this at this level.
At this grade level.
And maybe we need to backtrack a little bit. And I just don't, either they don't get it or we don't, I don't know, but there's something that doesn't line up.
I think that's what the Common Core did though.
Yes.
That's what Allison, her point a few minutes ago was, is that the Common Core actually does have it. That's part of the whole vision that we've just had.
Took topics away.
Is to, it did take some things away and waited till later years so that we can spend more time on, on the things that are going to be the base for all later learning that you can accelerate later. So actually, that is happening now, is that there's more time spent on the things that are going to really matter so that they can developmentally get it.
Well, if you don't have the foundation, you can't build on it, no matter what it is.
That's right. Just as you have literacy and it's so important, we have numeracy, and that's what they've made time for, us to really cement the numeracy before they move on. And that's why it's exciting, because we feel like, oh, wow, we can, someone's validating, yes, we need to spend more time on these things.
Well, it takes a little less of the push off of you to keep achieving, achieving, when you know, how can you set goals that you can't reach?
Exactly.
You know, it just doesn't make any sense. But this is a great idea. Now I know it's coming home.
There you go. That's right.
I will look for the packet.
I just want to commend Allison. This is just an example of how hard she works, number one. But more importantly, this is a great example of exactly what we're trying to do, is try new things, communicate in different ways, get parents involved in different ways that might, you know, really work, and just constantly try. We learn from everything we try, and that is exactly what we're trying to do, and this is a great example of it. So thanks for all your hard work.
Well, you know what? It's nice to work in a place where you're allowed to sort of communicate with your colleagues and troubleshoot and then try something else. So that's not true everywhere. So thank you.
Yeah, but your enthusiasm is contagious. I can't imagine anybody being around you and not wanting to meet goals and to achieve.
It's all the Diet Coke.
I live on the same planet.
Caffeine.
I'll just second what Tevvy said. Anybody who's watching, or any parents out there who haven't met Allison, should, because she is an asset to our district.
That's very kind. Thank you.
And I love your creativity and what you're doing. Allison, my, my one question is, is there in your mind some blend between the strategy of teaching math these days and the drill and kill?
It's a great question.
Because my, my own experience is that kids are able to think more creatively about math now, but I think there's some amount of that drilling of facts that probably is still valuable.
Yeah, I think I would refer to it as practice rather than drilling, but the, the research says that you really need a combination of both. And so it's when it happens. And actually, I, at Open House, had the teachers give out a developmental continuum to the parents, which I probably should put up on the website now that I'm saying it. And it shows how, in those phases, phase one, what grade it should happen and what skills you should be working on, and then when does that practice come? That like, you know, now you've got to get it quick. And there is a time for that. The problem is, if you do it too soon, it's an exercise in futility, because you're just, you're probably practicing it wrong, or you're relying on counting. You see the hands under the desk, you know, and they're trying to figure it out. So it's all about the sequence, but absolutely. And that's why we do have the timed assessments in place. And we were just talking at grade level meetings today about where can we put in more opportunities for students to practice in writing without it being attached to a grade? And so we talked about making a center where they could go and put the headphones on and listen to a fact, write the answer, and after five seconds, hear the answer so that they can see if they got it right, and just giving them that additional practice, but after they've had the strategy instruction.
So to sort of put a practical spin on that, why both are needed, I think if you remember the way we used to try to remember things, if there was one particular fact that just escaped you, you know, let's say you could always remember what nine plus eight was, but you could never remember what nine plus seven was for some reason, how many times does my brain have to say, "Well, I know nine plus eight, so I can just go down one." You know, and that, how many times does my brain have to repeat that before then I know the new fact? Or your example, if I know seven plus seven and I know fourteen easily, but I, for some reason, I'm in second grade, I can't remember eight plus eight, how many I'm in second grade, I can't remember eight plus eight, how many times does my brain have to say, double it and add two? And then by the time, you know, how many times it might be different for me than it might be for you or for you, before my brain starts kicking in the 16 right away? So that's the balance between having the strategy so you can get to it fairly quickly and then get to the autom- the automaticity that we talk about. And it is different for every kid.
And you know, the other piece of that is, when you learn your facts the other way, you were sort of locked into, you knew up to 12 times 12. And you can test this out with people you know. If you ask them, you know, 13 times, even a one-digit number, 13 times six, they might have to pause and they didn't memorize that one. So, but if they thought about taking the numbers apart and putting them back together, 10 times six, three times six, and then put it back together, then they can do any fact and they can do any kind of computation. And that's the kind of thinking that we're after, so that they're not boxed in.
Katie? I just want to say, Allison, it's always a pleasure to hear from you because you're always so enthusiastic and you make it seem so much fun, so.
It is fun.
And you're very crea-, well, I know, listening to you it is, but you're very creative. And, you know, you talk a lot about how learning has evolved and changed in the teaching piece of it. And you were just mentioning about putting something up on the website. How do we gear this way of teaching to parents? I mean, especially people in my generation and younger and older and, you know, that we understand and get that there is a new way of doing this. Because I think, I'm sure that some parents may think, whoa, Johnny or Suzie has to know what eight times eight is by a certain grade.
That's a great question too. And something that we've talked quite a bit about. We're having a parent, and I don't want to steal the thunder from the next part of our presentation, but we are having a parent presentation on October 17th at the Burrow. We'll tell you more in part two. That we will go over this fluency plan and point people, again, to these websites where all these strategies and apps, all of this is still available. It's not gone because the summer's over. And there's something exciting going on in the district that I would love to bring to you at another time. But just in a nutshell, as teachers get document cameras in their classroom and they're becoming more creative, I have seen teachers creating videos of a magic square or a cross number puzzle or all those things that you're like, what? I didn't, I don't know what that is. And the kids are on, you don't see the kids, but you just see the cross number puzzle, explaining to the parents how to do this. And making our own little, almost like a Khan Academy where the kids are explaining everything. So I think we're headed there to make sure that the parents, because that's part of it. If we want to do this, we need to inform the parents so they can, parents are very well-intentioned and want to be involved and often say, what do I do? Because that's not how I did it. And they just take out, you know, whatever they have. So you're right, we need to give them more. Coming soon.
Coming soon. Stay tuned.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to say, this is the first time my younger son has been excited about summer math. He came home with the packet and said, "I'm signing up for the app, Mom." So thank you for that.
That's great. That's great to hear.
And my older son would like to know when the middle schoolers are going to get the apps.
Next summer.
Because he was, had the calendar that he had to dress up.
Yes, I know. And you know, I could only handle so much, but it will be, the middle school rolled out the Common Core this year, so it's just the same exact schedule.
Well, they'll be excited.
Yes, I'm hoping so. Yeah, part of it is fighting the battle of making them want to do it at home, so.
Well, the rule was, if you picked up your iTouch, you had to do some math before you did anything else.
Nice.
So thank you for that.
Thank you. That's fantastic.
That's true partnership.
That's right.
All right, Allison, let's go. More. Come on.
Like, that's the first I heard that she can only do so much. She's pretty much giggled.
I was going to advocate for a second room so she could put the middle school spread it all out.
No, I'm going to have a better system this time. Great, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Stay right where you are. Stay right here. Okay.
Our next agenda item is the elementary math report card update. I'll go to Amy once more.
I'll go and join Allison here in just a moment, but I just wanted to kind of put this into context. You may remember that we came forward last year with the kindergarten standards to revise the math portion for kindergarten. And at that point, we said we would be coming back at this point in time to talk about the other elementary grades with the math standards. As we've said a number of times, we have this shift where we're really looking at going much deeper instead of that mile wide and a lane-ish deep. And as a result, we needed to communicate that to parents as far as, so they understand what the standard and expectation for mastery at the end of each grade level is, because the new framework really articulates that very specifically. So we have gone and looked at each of the elementary report cards, and for the most part, if you think about the purpose of a report card, it is to communicate progress for students. And you will see that there is a lot to communicate here in what we've done with the math standards. We've pretty much doubled the number of standards that we're reporting on at each grade level. We are not here with the English Language Arts part, even though you may remember that we have a new curriculum framework there in ELA. We wanted to make sure that we really did this thoroughly. And so taking one of these huge contents at a time made sense. So we are continuing to work on the English Language Arts standards, but those are very different. When you think about math, it's much easier to quantify because we're saying specifically, like addition, you know, subtraction, multiplication, division, where in English Language Arts, we're talking about more comprehension, phonemic awareness. So it's a, it's a very different piece here. So with the math, you'll see that we doubled pretty much the number of standards that we're reporting on. But instead of going through every single one of those standards on each of the grade levels, what Allison and I wanted to really focus on were the mathematical shifts that are taking place. Importantly, what are they? What students are required to do? And then kind of getting to your point over here, parents. What can parents do to support this shift in mathematics? And what kinds of questions should they be asking? Not only when they look at the report card and they have conferences with teachers, but that ongoing communication. So Allison has worked very closely with every single teacher in the elementary schools. Everyone has been involved in this, which is beautiful. Many times you'll have just select teachers from each grade level, but we've had every single teacher at every grade level working on this to really look at the shift from what it was to what the new expectation is and how we can best communicate to parents, students' progress. So we are going to start here with these shifts. And I will let Allison talk specifically to these as we go through.
Oh, thank you. Okay, so the first one we talk about is a shift in focus. And actually, Debbie alluded to that earlier. The Common Core and the new Massachusetts curriculum frameworks have decluttered the standards so that we can say which ones are the most critical for the grade level and sort of gave the teachers some breathing room to focus on those and get to mastery so that students really know it before they move to the next level. The next one is coherence. So that's thinking about, how does it work from grade to grade and understanding what comes before you and what comes after you so that teachers can hold kids accountable for what was before, activate that knowledge, and then build upon it. Fluency, there it is, right in the middle there. Students are expected to have speed and accuracy with simple calculations, and we want students to structure their class time so that they can have the time, I don't like the word memorize there, but that's adapted from another district's interpretation. But through repetition and the conceptual understanding we were talking about earlier. Deep understanding, and that sort of relates to the fluency piece I've been talking about. Really understanding what you're doing with numbers. It's not just eight plus seven is 15, it's why is that, what does that quantity mean? Well, it's one more than seven plus seven, and understanding that. It's also about kids conceptually mastering the concept before we're asking them to move on when they're not exactly ready. They actually don't just get the answer right because of a trick, they learn it. And when you learn it, you retain it. The application piece, and this is what we're seeing coming down in our assessment questions, students are no longer just expected to do a calculation. They're expected to read a problem, understand it, and then apply their knowledge to tackle that problem. And then the last one, dual density. That's the part that Bruce was just speaking about, practicing and understanding, being able to do both. And having a balance there. Because before, there was just a lot of the push without so much of the understanding.
And this, so this is going to describe each of these focus areas in a little bit more specifically, but I think it's important, especially with parents who have older children, you may have a sixth grader and when you now have a third grader thinking back to when that child was in third grade, the focus has changed because we're really looking more narrowly. So we're spending time on fewer concepts. So you can't automatically think, well, John did this when he was in third grade, because it has changed with the standards. And then what can parents do here? Really understand what is the expectation. And it's very clearly laid out on the report card. That's the end of the year expectation for what students should know and be able to do. Spend time with their children on the different priority areas within math and talk with those teachers as far as their progress.
And I love at the top where it says, "Learn more about less." That's it in a nutshell. That's what that focus is. You're doing a great job. You can keep going.
We've been doing a lot of math talk. As far as going across grades, we are building. So we talk about really the focus on addition and subtraction in second grade, having that key understanding before moving to third grade. But we also see coherence across grades and building on skills. And as far as parents, think about where your child struggled in the year before and how that might impact learning for that next grade level. And really advocate for your child to make sure that if there are gaps in particular areas, whether it's negative numbers or fractions, that's one of the things that as we shift to this new framework, that teachers and we're having to be very cognizant of because of the shift, that any gaps from the old framework to the new framework, that we're addressing those. So we're not emphasizing a gap that they adjust because of the shift to the new framework that's based on the Common Core. Speaking to Allison's points before, if you don't have the fact fluency early on and really own and understand numbers, then you're not going to be able to have success with fractions, as an example, later on. And then if you're able to be fluent and have that automaticity and really be able to decompose numbers and put them back together and understand the relationship of numbers, then that will lead to understanding with larger concepts, with fractions, that leads to algebra. Many students say, why do I have to learn this? Really getting the connections to real-world applications so that they understand that there is a reason that they're learning algebra. And then success in college or, as we know with the college and career readiness, which is the focus of the Common Core, to be ready for career or college. The speed and accuracy, we talked a lot about that, so not to spend a lot of more time here, but practicing, it really is what Allison was talking about before, a lot of practice through games, through the apps on the iPad. I can speak to the ones she would find the app when she says she went through 3,000 of them. I think she really did.
I really did.
Because I would take them home and introduce them to my children, try this one out, just to kind of get ideas too. But it really is having a lot of practice where it's fun and it's engaging so that they do become fluent.
And it can be a game for parents. I remember last year, there were a bunch of kindergartners in the hallway waiting to go to the bathroom, and I just asked them if they could show me with their hands how to, different ways to make a 10. So I said, if you have eight, how many more would you need? And they held up the two, and then if it were seven, they held the three. They were so excited to do all those different combinations. So I think part of it is, especially if, as a child, you had math anxiety, to not bring that along with you, but to try to say, okay, this is different now. And it can actually be fun and try to make it fun for your kids. And it doesn't have to be hard.
And the important piece too, is those strategies that we've talked about, sometimes we, and I know this as a parent myself, you want to go to those other, maybe facts. But if you're working on doubles plus one, are those different strategies? Try to know what those are, and the more we can reinforce those, that's what's helpful. Instead of thinking, oh, I'm going to push them. We really want them to have it solid with the ones that are at their grade level expectation. So this just gives you an idea at each grade level what the fluency requirements are for that automaticity.
And so that they master these things by the end of those grade levels.
Know it and do it. It comes back to truly understanding why we're doing what we're doing. Talk about it. The more that we can talk, we think about oral language and reading, we need to have that oral language in math. Math talk is critical. Teachers taking time to really have students come up and solve different ways. I was in a classroom the other day and they were taking the number 10 and the different ways. And they had tiles in front of them. And they were showing that if I have 10 tiles in front of me, I can move them around and I still have 10. And so they talked about, well, what if I moved them this way? Or if I took some and added them in a different way, if I'm still coming up with a sum of 10. The next part was a student came up to the document camera that kind of is like you think about the overhead projector, but instead, they were able to come right up, the teacher switches right to that, and the student comes up and explains a strategy. Another student then comes up and explains their strategy for finding sums of 10. It's really important that they have that opportunity to talk, and it's the kids talking to the kids, because many times they listen more.
And to see that there's more than one way to solve a problem and that not one way is better than another way, or it's a way they didn't think of. And they do get very excited about all the different ways, especially when they can show it under the document camera, their solution.
The real-world applications, really understanding in what situations you're going to use math, the more parents will talk about it. They may think that it's at times falling on deaf ears. I know I've experienced that. But it's amazing how it comes back up in different situations and you think, oh, they were listening. Or they'll ask a question later that lets you know that just by talking about it, that they, that they were listening. And giving them the opportunity to solve problems and give their own solutions of how that they would solve problems.
And by doing that, they get some experience with which math applies to which situation. And when am I supposed to use, you know, what? In the, when I was in school, it was, this page was all on multiplication, so I knew every single problem I was going to have to multiply. I was never in a situation where I had to think about that for myself. So we want to expose them to more opportunities for that.
Thinking fast and solving problems, the more that we're automatic and we're not getting stumbled over something such as basic facts or just easy concepts, you're able to move to the more complex. And we want them to be fluid with this problem solving and be able to move within concepts easily. And that is going to help by practicing. So we want to make sure that opportunities, many times we'll say, make sure you read for 20 minutes at night. And that, whether it's using the app, whether it's doing a game, whether it's Go Fish, any of these other things that parents take the time to really practice, whether it's math facts or just problem solving in general, connecting that to real life. Before we talk more about the parent information night, I just want to point out too, that on the report card that you have with the standards for each of the grade levels, with them, with there being so many, in some cases, you know, you have into the teens.
I fixed it online. I'm sorry, it's the 17th, not the 16th. And I did, I had fixed it on the other one.
Let's just make sure, in case somebody's watching, it's Wednesday, October 17th.
17th, yes. And this will go out in newsletters from, I have everybody announcing it as many possible times as they can. So teachers are putting in their classroom newsletters, schools are putting it in their newsletters, it will be up on the website and I believe there's even some email blasts that are going out. We would really love parents to come and learn more.
Fabulous, thank you.
The other piece too, and one of the things that we'll talk about at the parent night, is that when you have that many standards and you think about that's the expectation for the grade level at the end of the year, you're going to have certain standards that are not assessed, meaning that it's addressed constantly within problem solving, but there's particular standards as far as a formal assessment does not take place. So you might see an NA for not assessed in term one, as an example, but the amount of information that parents are receiving still exceeds what they received overall last year.
In the old report card. A good example of that came up today, actually. We were meeting with first and second grade teachers and they were talking about how they do graphing, sort of with the weather and with their calendar and they do it different things, but they said, "But we don't actually teach graphing in the first quarter, so we're not going to assess that at this time." Because even though we're doing it and the kids are exposed to it, it's not really fair to assess them on it when we haven't instructed on it yet. So that's really what those NAs represent.
I have a question. When you talk about the frameworks and what's expected throughout the state, I always have a question about what if, is everybody on a level playing field? In other words, what we're teaching here, what we're expecting, are they expect, is it expected in Mansfield, Sharon, whatever? Because my big concern sometimes is what happens to the student that moves in or out of a district? And you know, you want to think that a child coming into our school system at a certain grade level has already had those things. And unfortunately, that might not, they may not have mastered them or whatever. I would like to think that when our students leave here, that they're where they're supposed to be. But I just wondered, is everybody doing the same thing we're doing or am I being?
Well, the Common Core is common. So all the states, not just Massachusetts, so if we had a student move in from another state, they would be exposed to the same curriculum. Now, within that, the programs might be different. Not everybody uses Think Map. They use some other program or a different science program.
But the expectation.
But the concepts are the concepts, yes. And it may be that if they came in November, you know, we did things in a different order. I mean, that's possible, but at the end of the year, yes.
Everybody should be.
Yes.
And you'll now see that too, as far as the Common Core, 46 states across the country have adopted.
So we will see greater consistency across the country because of the Common Core. So that's what we expect to see. But everybody's where we are, which is either in, we're in year two for most things, but it just started a year ago. So that's where we are.
Bruce? So just, and I apologize if I missed this, so the new elementary report cards for mathematics will begin this year. We did K last year, so 1 through 4. 4 beginning first quarter this year.
Yes.
So for parents at home who can't see this, I think it's pretty good. Makes me wish my kids were back in first, because it, you know, there are 10 or 12 line items roughly per grade that specify what your child can and can't do skill wise, right? Am I describing that?
Absolutely.
Well, so I think this will be pretty clear for parents to understand exactly where their children are and where they need to continue to work.
And that was the goal, to be more explicit.
So I think it looks good.
Yes. It's exactly the point of a true standards-based report card, is to be able to really communicate specifically what you call the priority work, but what are we really trying to focus on? And not just be able to report to parents, you know, your child got a letter grade or a number grade or whatever it is in math, because we're not sure what that means. Usually for every child, there's things that you're very good at and there might be other things you're still working on. So a true standards-based report card really just shows where the child is in relation to the standard, not in relation to everybody else, but how is this child growing toward the standard or maybe met or exceeded the standard. So we have had standards-based report cards here in Foxborough for a number of years, but not standards-based enough. So this is now more fully fleshed out, standards-based reporting and in line with the Common Core. So you obviously approved the kindergarten switch last spring and we're asking you to approve the changes in the elementary math, grades 1 through 4 report card, so that teachers can begin using it now for reporting in November and for discussing it at parent conferences in November, so they'll have much more specific information.
I would make the motion to use the new report card as presented.
One second. Motion as you made, seconded, all in favor. Five, zero, zero. Thank you.
Thank you for all your work. Clearly presented as usual.
Thank you for all your work. There's many, many hours.
I love the format of the PowerPoint, but that's just what students must do and what parents can do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
While we're waiting to shift, and I know we have, we seem to have a new perhaps visitor reported, all the handouts from the meeting for the public visitors are on that counter over there and you're welcome to help yourself.
Now, I did see some people seem like they're going to climate, oh, they're already, or they're going to China.
That's pretty, okay.
All right. School culture and climate goals and a review of the draft. This is Penelope.
Yes, a little bit of background. We've talked about culture and climate for quite a while here at the committee level. As you know, a year ago, we conducted our first ever culture, not a year ago, last February. So that would be six months ago, we conducted our very first culture and climate survey in the district. We surveyed all parents, K through 12, all staff, K through 12, and the students in grade 6 through 12, to see what people's perceptions were about the culture and climate of individual schools and in the district at large. That activity came from our strategic plan, which was approved by this committee in May of 2011. And in the one umbrella objective under culture and climate and communication with all the constituency groups, what we realized is that we couldn't set culture and climate goals without knowing where we were. So you have to have baseline data and know where you are in order to know where you want to go. So it's similar to a roadmap. You are here, you know, pointing on the map. We didn't know where we were. So that's how we spent all of last year collecting a lot of data. So just for a little background, I put in the school committee packet, a very recent September 2012, so it was just, well, it's October 1st, so I guess I have to say last month, but they just had a really nice one-page opinion piece in ASCD, which is Association for School Curriculum Development, Association for Supervision of Curriculum and Development, ASCD. And most of us who are administrators and have anything to do with curriculum belong to this organization. And they had a piece about community and it's called, "Create a Positive School Culture." So obviously, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I'd just like to read a little bit because this really, to me, explained why are we spending so much time on this and why should everybody? And the title is, "Create a Positive School Culture." I'm going to jump around a little bit. So, "The school culture may seem like an intangible, amorphous concept, yet it affects everything that happens in your school every day." Jumping to the second paragraph. "A school's culture is a combination of countless attributes that create the school's experience. It is largely defined by what is important to the student body. It encompasses their principal outlook and behaviors." Principles, outlook and behaviors. "It includes the traditions of the school, what and how the school celebrates, and what is accepted by the majority as the norm. It influences all aspects of student life within the school community, including the character of individual students, as well as the social and academic components of school life. All too often, school culture is left to develop on its own. The students determine among themselves what's important and what's not. School rules affect it, but culture can also be purposely crafted, influenced, and improved upon through the efforts of staff members." Then the last paragraph says, "School culture can encourage or inhibit active students. It can make a student feel welcome or intimidated, and it can encourage or quash academic motivation. As teachers or educators, we have the opportunity to foster positive changes to the everyday experience in our schools. Investing time in improving school culture is worth the effort." So while it's really a complex process of how we're going about trying to improve our culture and climate district-wide in each school, it is well worth our time. And I have to say, I once again feel very lucky to work in Foxborough because most, if not all, of our colleagues in other public schools across the nation, certainly not in Massachusetts, certainly as well in Massachusetts, are confronted by many more challenges that might relate to budget or finances or getting the resources that students and teachers need. And I feel that we're, you know, through the support of the committee in the town, we're in such good shape as a public school district that we actually can pay attention to this important topic. Most of our colleagues, Amy and I talk about this all the time, most of our colleagues in other districts just can't even get there because they have so many more pressing problems. So I feel really lucky that even though it's a complex task to tackle, we're actually addressing culture and climate in a very targeted, deliberate, and explicit way. So as the committee knows, our administrative team spent a great deal of time during our August administrative retreat reviewing data collected about perceptions of staff, parents, and students regarding school and district culture and climate. So we reviewed two bases of data. One is from our very own 2012 Foxborough K-12 Insight Culture and Climate surveys that I previously mentioned, and those were administered and reported back in February. We also realized we had a second data source which is available to us as administrators, which is the 2012, it's called the TELMASS survey. And this is a survey that the Department of Education in Massachusetts conducts periodically, not every year. And TELMASS stands for Teaching Empowering Leading in Learning in Massachusetts. So periodically, they survey all the educators in the Commonwealth and it is a voluntary thing for teachers to participate. If you get 50% or more participation in a particular school building, you'll get building-based results back, and we did in four of our five schools, which is tremendous. And district-wide, you get all the districts back. So the results were very recently reported by school and district. So we also realized there was a lot of data about culture and climate in there that we could mine. So we looked at both those data sources for a long time and spent a lot of time at our retreat on this topic. So from this information, principals and other administrators developed their unique school-based culture and climate goals. Many, if not most, of these school-based goals are one-year goals and are attached for their information. So the principals and working with their staff have developed their individual school-based culture and climate goals and based on whatever it was that stood out in their very school-specific information. So you'll see some of their goals relate to staff, some of them relate to students, some of them relates to parents. So that's, those are the goals that they have started off their year and they're mostly one-year goals. I think we can start there, just if you have any observations or questions about their school-based goals, that they have started off their year, they wanted time, that's why we didn't report on this in September, they wanted time to meet with their faculty at a faculty meeting and share the goals and explain them and discuss them before they were public here at this meeting. Questions about their school-based goals? Already on the roll?
It's interesting that there are some commonalities across all three schools. I guess not surprising.
No.
One of them, just again, I always like to tell the folks who are listening but can't see what we see, one of them, you know, that sticks out is enrichment and challenge across all three elementaries.
Yes. So that's something that when we had, during our retreat, when we had our work session, all three principals said, "We all see that." And so why don't we incorporate that as a shared goal? So what fits in really nicely is that's also a strategy and an area of focus that had come out of the superintendent's entry plan. So it's really nice when focus areas all kind of come together and speak to the same thing and point you all in the same direction. So we didn't look at this until August. We'd already decided that advanced learning and expanding opportunities was something we wanted to do. And sure enough, we find out that parents are reporting that, and which we did already know that, but we also decided to focus on that.
I do just have a question. Their goals, did they set their own measurement of?
Yes.
Okay. It's just interesting to see some of the differences between the schools as well.
Yes, I think this is the point, don't forget, this is the first time, I don't actually know of any of the schools that have culture and climate goals. I really don't. I don't even know of any of the school systems that have data about how people feel about the schools. So we're excited about venturing into this territory, but it is the first year of the goals. We're going to see how they go and see whether the goals that were reasonable, were attainable, were indeed measurable. It doesn't really matter which data source the goal arose from. We can take our K-12 Culture and Climate Survey and even though they're not going to be giving the TELMASS, we call them both, the TELMASS survey again, we can just take out their question, we know exactly what the question was and what the data said in the baseline, and we can incorporate that by customizing our own survey so that we can get that data a year from, next spring, basically, a year after the other. So you can see, I'll just give people that don't have the benefit of seeing it, there are school-based goals about teachers' level of influence on decision-making within the school, they have goals about that, and sometimes multiple data points to measure, starting baseline and going forward. Improving the consistency in enforcement of rules for student conduct within the school, whether teachers perceive that student conduct is being consistently enforced. We have the, in conjunction with parents, we have the goal of expanding enrichment and challenge. We have goals about, just in one particular school, about school environment being clean and well-maintained and staff reporting that it is hopefully improving. We have staff perceptions that have established procedures and practices that promote staff to raise issues and concerns that are important to them in a risk-free environment. We have, again, some of the similar ones that they share. Let's increase the communication of useful information to parents on how to help their children. That's a particular area within one of the surveys that we saw. You can see a goal about students, reporting that students do not threaten or bully each other in school. We had one school where that came out and that's definitely a goal for that school. You can see at another school level that we had conflicting data in that area from two different sources of the way that the question was asked. So what that says to us is we need to explore that further by meeting with students and student groups to say, what, how do people really feel? We have two different things that say something different. What is it that students are feeling before we can, you know, and what do they really believe before, you know, we see a high school go around substance abuse and students' perceptions and beliefs about that and social norms about drug and alcohol prevention, increasing school home communication. So those are the school-based goals. You can see how some of them are students, some of them are for parents, and some of them relate to staff.
I just have a question. I know you spent time during the administrative retreat, right, reviewing this data?
Yes.
So how, did the individual schools decide on their own and then come to the group with their goals?
Individual schools analyzed what was standing out in their data.
Okay.
And then we came together as administrative team and looked at them all and discussed them. And for some, if they were a similar thing, but they have the autonomy to say, "This is what my school needs to work on based on the data I see."
Okay.
And so that's why you see some similarities and some differences.
Okay. Just wanted to kind of understand the process. So these were really the three that stood out for each of these schools?
Oh, sometimes it's more than three. So there's three, four, three. Because we didn't say, I certainly didn't say, you know, you have to have X number of culture and climate goals. We said, "Is what really stands out."
Right.
If six things stood out, you would have seen six. If two things stood out, you would have seen two. So anywhere between three and four, that's what you really see.
It's consistent.
Right. And that too is, you know, we literally had probably between the two surveys, you know, over 100, over 120 different data points. So you've got to focus on something. So that was our first step. Our second step was to look and say, based on all the information we have, what's important for us to focus on district-wide? What are the culture and climate goals that we as a central office team are acknowledging that we support the school-based goals? What are we going to establish for our own central office district-wide administrative goals? So these are proposed because these, of course, I do want your feedback and input on. So that's why these particular goals, say, draft, and it's for our discussion here. And so we would really love your feedback on the goals before we finalize the district-wide goals. So just to read so people understand at home, we have the first goal, and for us, based on the strategic plan, our district-wide goals really dovetail with the strategic plan. So ours are three-year goals because that's what it says, is use the baseline information. First, collect the baseline information, which we did, and then second, establish three-year goals district-wide around culture and climate. So while the schools chose to have one-year goals, which I think is great because they want to have some snappy progress on some of the things that are really important, for us, these are three-year goals and they tend to be a little bit maybe district-wide specific. They may or may not be specific to one school, but they're what we're going to use district-wide. The first one is to increase the overall percentage of parents district-wide who report that students do not threaten or bully each other at the school by 17% as measured by the K-12 Insight Culture and Climate Survey. As everyone knows, we've talked a lot and worked a lot on anti-bullying. No, we, I think we were always worried that bullying is something, well, I would say conflict, because bullying is, conflict, harassment, and bullying are three different things. We've talked about this table. Conflict is when students have conflict. We need to teach them conflict resolution skills so they can work out their difficulties with one another and learn how to do that progressively from now till they get to adulthood. Hopefully, in adulthood, they'll be good conflict resolvers. Harassment is just what it says, when you're harassing somebody, you might do it once. Bullying is a pattern of harassment, a pattern of acts over time, and that's how bullying is defined. So whether we're talking about the other two, it's a little bit different, but bullying is whether there's an ongoing pattern of harassment or intimidation or exclusion over time. So this is something we always discuss because, you know, we worry that this is something that unfortunately goes on, it goes on historically. You know, there's all kinds of discussions about whether we can completely eradicate it, but we certainly need to make a lot more progress on it. So we want students to be able to report that they don't feel threatened or bullied at the school and we want more students to report that. To increase the percentage of staff who report that teachers have time available to collaborate with colleagues by 15% as measured by the TELMASS survey. This is what came out of all of our data surrounding teachers, especially with the new evaluation system we've spent so much time discussing here at this table, that if that is important to the new teacher evaluation system and the new expectations for professional collaboration, we've talked for you, every school system's trying to increase the time that teachers have to work together for improvement in whatever effort it is. So that is what came out, is that we want more teachers to say in three years that they have time. Now, will there ever be enough time for collaboration for the myriad of things? It wasn't true when you taught, it wasn't true when I taught, it wasn't true when you taught years later. But, you know, wouldn't it be lovely if we got to the point where teachers said, "I have plenty of time and all the time I need to collaborate with other professionals to the good of the profession." But if we could just get that improved by 15%, we'd be thrilled because that would make it three-quarters of our staff say that they feel I have enough time. And when you have hundreds of staff, that'd be fabulous. The third is to, this came out of the staff, the parents, and the student survey. So even though it's number three, I feel in some ways it's really up there on our list to increase the percentage of staff, parents, and students who report favorable views that high-quality, healthy food is served in the school cafeterias. So you can see that from our baseline numbers that we had kind of low numbers. So you can see that from our baseline numbers that we had kind of low numbers in that area. That's why we started paying attention to this much more last year, especially when Bill came on January first. Then we get this data in February. So while we knew that we had improvement in that area, everything that's happened since has reinforced it. Obviously, we've had some updates here at this table, and we'll have some in the future. We are having a little bit of struggle, I'm just going to say, with the federal guidelines that just came in this summer. We talked about it this morning. Bill and I met with the food service director and the high school principal. There are some really strict, there were some really great aspects of the new US government regulations regarding public school cafeterias and food service and portions and nutrition and calorie intake, all of that, there were some really good pieces to it. There are also some pieces that we're struggling with, not unlike anybody else. And one of them is the portions that you're allowed to serve. Some of them are kind of small. And we have kids who need, especially at high school, who might need a higher-calorie lunch that it seems like a small portion. That is not something we're doing. It's, they come in and they audit our portions and look at the menus, and will continue to be audited annually like we always have. Whether we pay attention to it or not, that is the way it is. But we are struggling with that a little bit. So actually, we had some plans this morning for maybe engendering some input from students and perhaps even advocating through letter writing with the federal government, because we're hearing all across the country, this, the idea of the ounces you're limited to, whether it's in beverages, whether it's in food. Some of them are awfully small. So, you know, I understand where the federal government was going with it, but it does, it's putting everybody in a really difficult position, because some kids need smaller amounts of food, just like adults, and some kids need a lot more food. They're going to practices after school, they're staying after school late. It doesn't seem like enough, and I'm, that's just us witnessing it, but it's also what kids are reporting and what we're concerned about. So new federal guidelines, it isn't, it isn't that any of us said to the cafeteria, "Just, you know, cut everything way down." It is, really isn't it. It has no relation to the increase in prices. It's, all these new guidelines came in, were required to go up in price, because we weren't meaning minimal guidelines for pricing, and the food, what you can serve and how you can serve it, is really tightened. So whether the federal government will loosen up on some of those things maybe a little bit, I think it might be possible if we become advocates. So actually gonna see what we can do about that, but that's where we are. So overall, though, high-quality, healthy food, that's where we want to see the increase in our culture and climate, that people believe that the, you know, aside from the portion issue, that high-quality, healthy food is served in the school cafeterias is very important. It's a really important part of the kid's life in school.
Joey?
For the school lunches, they serve like, they serve like, I don't know, they serve fruit and veggies.
Yes.
They have, they have like sweetened fruits or white fruits.
Right. And I think that's the tricky part, is that kids can take more salad, they can take more fruits, they can take more vegetables. But some kids want more protein or more grains in a larger quantity, and it's the protein and the grain sizes that are quite small.
Then the elementary school, you get to, they, you only have one choice of the other. You get, you only get to choose one fruit and veggie, you don't get to choose a lot.
Now you can have as much as you want.
Yeah.
As fruits and vegetables.
How do they do it now?
But, you know, all of us have had children who didn't eat some things during their development years. I certainly had one of those. So it's hard to say to, "Well, if you choose everything that's there, you'll be full." Well, maybe not if you don't actually consume it. So that's where we're struggling a little bit.
It's kind of ironic. I'd be hard pressed to think there's a parent here with small children who measures their food at home. Do you measure it before you put it on their plate? And yet we have the government telling us how many ounces of this and how many ounces of that. And I just find it a little bit ironic that they have that kind of control because they're here in school and they're funding the program versus what we feel is appropriate for our children.
Correct.
And I think it is time for us to step up to the plate and go, "Time out."
The overall premise of helping kids make healthy choices and choose a wider variety is very important. I'm arguing with that. That is all to the good. I think that's great. Having kids try new foods, maybe expanding their palate a little bit is wonderful. But there are some parts of it, we're not gonna, not gonna hide, we discussed it this morning, there are, that idea of the size of the chicken or whatever it is has, you know, some kids feel like they need a little bit more to eat, and in fact, they may.
Thank you.
So, goals.
Dana?
I actually have a question. The first goal reflects or discusses the overall percentage of parents district-wide who report that students do not threaten or bully each other at the school.
Yes.
And then, but the middle school goal, the third goal on the middle school page discusses the number of students reporting that students do not threaten or bully each other in the school. I didn't know why parents are focused on at the district level versus students at the middle school level. Did you discuss that, or?
Here's, here's really what happened.
Yeah.
The district-wide goals, we wanted to be K-12 goals. We only surveyed students in six of them.
Six, okay.
So that while they have specific, what students reported at the middle school, and they can rely on that pretty certainly, it wouldn't, we can't make it a district-wide goal because it doesn't include K-5.
That makes sense. I, I'm glad to see it reflected in the middle school, because that was concerning, that the baseline is thirty-five percent of students reporting that students do not bully or harass other, or threaten or bully, not harass. But, thank you, that clarifies that for me.
Yeah, I, I was concerned too when I saw that. So I'm glad to see that it's a goal. I mean, and I know we have our task force, and there's emphasis, and we're working towards that, but I really would like to see that number go up.
Me too.
I mean, like you said, it's, you know, can we eradicate it? But we really have to put a lot of resources in. It affects everything, a child's school experience and can...
Absolutely does.
Their learning, their socialization, it, we have to continue the emphasis on that. Maybe we can try to get periodic updates from our, even our task force.
Well, it's a goal, so now you will. But it's also, you know, it's also what, something we've been focusing on, so we certainly will. Actually, we, we thought we were meeting next Tuesday, the two people are university professors that were, that actually helped analyze our bullying surveys, our specific bullying survey, not this K-12 insight. So Amy and I actually had something set up with them next week, but they had to reschedule. So within the next couple of weeks, we'll be meeting with them to look at the data over the last two years and really try to pinpoint a little bit more. And then we'll be coming, we'll have them come and talk more specifically about what they saw, if they saw any trends. We only have two years of data, so it's not a big trend, but what did they see in common? Did they see any improvements from one year to the next? We only have that last year. We have 2011, 2012 so far, but that's a really important piece of information to collect. So they are, they have, that's a completely separate system. They have a data analysis program that they use at the university, and they come back to us with the results. So it's not something that we analyze. So that's actually a third data point to these two, so.
You know, and I guess, you know, on the one hand, it's like, we've tried to make so much progress in this district, and I guess I feel like we shouldn't be surprised. But then when we turn on, you know, and I turn on the national news, and I'm sure all of you heard about what happened to that young woman out in high school, I can't remember what state it was, you know, it's prevalent everywhere, and it's, that's why we have to keep the light shined on it. So I'm glad there's, this goal is here.
I think one of the obstacles we run into, especially with the middle school, is that when students do witness things with other, and they're friends with this person, and they see what's going on, and yet when they're, you know, asked about something, they hesitate to support the person because they also realize that they could put themselves, make themselves a target at that point. And I think, I find that very disturbing, very unnerving, especially when you have a group of girls who are friends, and then all of a sudden, when something happens, and then, "Oh, I don't remember that," or whatever. And friendships are ruined forever at that point, because they don't back them up. And I think we, as parents, grandparents, teachers, administrators, have to be in a position where we support these kids and tell them, "It's okay to back this up, and it's okay to support this, because you never know what's going to happen to you." And when you turn to somebody and they turn their back on you, it's difficult. So I think it's a learning curve for everybody, Katie, and you know, you're in the field.
Yeah.
And I think we have to be as supportive and whatever that we can be of these kids, because it's okay to tell, and it's okay to support somebody. But that's a long learning curve, and I think it's, it showcases the area of immaturity and not knowing where you fit in and how you develop, and I think we have to do more to accent that.
I agree.
I have a comment about the food, if I can go back to that.
I'm sure, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind, I'm sure you're not surprised by what I had to say.
I wasn't surprised, actually.
Well, and I, I'd heard too about the portion concern, so I appreciate you addressing that. I'm also hearing Debbie about a, I don't know the right way to phrase it, but a taste concern, an appeal concern. And I don't know what we're doing with our new food service director to poll the students. And I know we are trying to make change.
Yes.
I wonder if we're making change too fast, potentially, but I'm hearing things like students, and you know, I work with a lot of young people in our town in sports and things, but I'm hearing about kids who've never took a lunch to school a day in their life now want to take their lunch, you know? So I'm, my, at least my radar is up a bit, and I wonder if you're getting any of that or what the right way is.
You know, interesting, that might be what you're hearing, but we actually talked this morning about whether our school lunch purchases have, are up, because another district emailed last week saying, "Are your, with this new, these new regulations, are your, is your purchasing up or down?" Only one district responded, "This is down." Ours is actually up, as in most districts are. So, I mean, they're trying soups, they're trying taste testings around the cafeteria like you would see, you know, I don't, have you been approached to try something in the cafeteria that you might not always? The middle school is doing it, they have some of these assistant principals doing it, Allison Johnson, the food service director's actually doing it, kind of when you go to the mall and they say, "Would you like to try?" You know, we all know, kids of that age are a little cautious, but actually, our food purchasing, our use of the food service for the month of September is higher than it has been on the September.
And I will say, there were a few quick things that they tried, probably a little too much too fast.
That's what I said.
And they did back off pretty quickly, because they realized that. It was, it was, the middle schools especially, that there were two or three things they tried in a single day, and nothing else was available, and therefore, the kid didn't really like it. And a lot of it was, it was, to be honest with you, I think, was the fact that they're unfamiliar items. Were being pushed to, to put a lot more bean-type products on plates. I mean, the federal government basically thinks that is one of the, the prime, you know, sources of protein that you should be putting out there. And a lot of kids, you know, at home just never see it, so they don't know how to react to it and don't know how to deal with it. But I will say that, you know, as an example, the food service group did cater the health fare that we just had. And when anybody who was out there and tried the food, and this was all stuff that's acceptable under the guidelines, except for maybe the cookies, but everything else, it was acceptable under the guidelines. And I think the response by most of the faculty and towns staff that were around that tried it were amazed at some of the things that were put out there and how good they actually tasted. It's an educational process, though, to get the kids to try some of these things, to find out that they actually aren't what they look like or, you know, from a taste point of view. So we do have a process here that's going to take, and we do have to do more of what just Deb just said, as far as sampling and getting kids to try things.
But yes, there are plans in place. So Allison and Janelle Erskine, who's the K-12 wellness director, they were meeting today, I believe, to plan how they're going to get some student involvement and some feedback from students and get more information what might work and what might not work. And combine, which is exactly what we wanted, combine the food service and the wellness initiatives and have both of those people work on that collectively. So we're, we're getting there. Some of the, some of the food, as Bill said, doesn't look familiar to kids, less inclined to try it. Amy actually wanted to get this food.
Debbie, I think probably knowing the committee, we're probably reasonable in our expectation of timeline, but I do, I guess, want to ask, maybe to ask Allison to come to us sooner rather than later and just share with us.
That'd be great.
Because I think that, you know, I get concerned when I hear kids are hungry or when I hear that kids aren't trying things. And we need, you know, this, this is a fundamental part of the school day that typically this committee doesn't have to work on, but I, I just, I'd rather we overanalyze this one now rather than wait for Allison to come to us and...
It is not a problem. I just want to reiterate that the reason it's never really talked about in the past is because basically food service is serving pizza, the ever-popular pizza.
Chicken fingers.
Chicken fingers, or every, open the...
Cheeseburgers.
A plastic bag, a plastic bag of chicken or chicken-like food and throwing it on a tray and putting in the oven, and then that's what you get. So it is not a lot of controversy when there's kind of some basic items that we've seen for the last, whatever, thirty years, and people recognize it and kids recognize it, and we just sort of accept that's what they're eating. We can't do that anymore. So what you're seeing is, I think, a few little growing pains into us trying to offer healthier and a wider variety of, hopefully tantalizing food choices and the constrictions of the new federal guidelines kind of coming together at the same time. So there will be some growing pains, but there are some things we can't do anymore. And that's, that's the reality of it.
I think we are understanding of growing pains, and personally, I'm at ease more hearing Bill say that we probably went a little too much too fast, because that to me says there's a recognition. I would just like to hear from Allison.
That's great.
What she's doing to survey kids, how we're determining the pace at which to change.
I would ask that maybe we do it closer to the end of October, just so that we have, because there's still a number of initiatives that are going on right now.
That's fine.
Salad bars being added to the two, two of the schools, which we think will actually serve some of the purposes of the nutritional program, but also give kids choices to get, take more of what they want to take off of a selection process, because it's going to be self-serve, where they can take as much as they want of something that's in that salad bar type thing, so.
And she doesn't, I think that's fine. Late October's fine. And I don't think she has to come with all the answers.
Well, then, that would be like November 5th, is that?
November 5th would be.
Yeah, because then you'd have the month of October to assess sales.
And like, as Bill was pointing out, some of the things we really want to do that we think kids would like, like the salad bars, we don't have the equipment.
I understand.
So we need to get the equipment in and start some of that moving as well.
I think I'd be interested in, we must have lunch monitors, and ask them to keep an eye on how much are the kids throwing away? And how empty or how full are those plates when they get through their lunches? And I think that'd be a good way of us having a handle on, are they eating or not? I mean, if they come through your door like gangbusters and head to the closet for their snacks, I think that's a good indication that maybe they're coming home hungry. And I, that kind of gives me a...
My kids always do. Cheeseburger or a pizza. I mean, they are going to come home hungry, so.
At eleven thirty in the morning, yeah.
Yeah, but they're even more. But I think, I think you're right, Bruce. You don't want to know that a child's not eating or not happy. And I think it's great and wonderful that we had a taste testing for the adults, but let me tell you, my taste buds now compared to what I liked then, two different things. You know, so, and it all depends on what parents cook at home. I mean, I can remember my kids going to people's houses and not eating at all, because they just didn't like what was there. And I'd say, "Well, could you at least, you know, try something while you're there? It's okay if you don't like it, but please don't be rude." But I, I think when they come to school, there is some sort of an expectation of what they've had in the past. They need to understand it's not going to be like that anymore, but it is going to take time. But I don't want to hear that we're throwing a lot of food away and that kids are going home hungry.
Bill, yes.
That's not acceptable.
Thank you.
Is Allison going to meet with the student councils at the high school and middle school level, talk to the kids perhaps?
Well, actually, whether it's the student councils or basically bringing together a group of kids that are interested in this topic directly, that's the way they're approaching it. As Deb just said, that on the high school level, especially with, you know, the wellness program being rolled out, they're going to coordinate that together. And we also want, quite honestly, we want to do it with the parents too. So we, we're looking at having two different types of councils, definitely at least on the high school and on the middle school with the students, and then with the parents overall, all the way through the elementaries and everything, so that we can get, you know, the feedback we want there. You know, I think the, I, I think, you know, there's a lot of things going on, the federal government, you know, makes some knee-jerk reactions to supersized of things, so they go the totally opposite way. But you, you do have to be very conscious of, of, you know, a 90-pound kid versus a 180-pound kid, doesn't need the same level of nutrients to keep on moving. And I think, again, they try to make one-size-fits-all, and that's what we're going to need to work with them on, to get them to understand that that doesn't work. And so I think, you know, I, I think we're, we're making the right moves, I think, obviously, we just started this, in every way. Everything that we've been rolling out this year is totally new, so.
And it is in every school system.
Yes.
Every school system's experienced this because of the guidelines.
Yeah, again, I think you guys are doing the right things. I would just request that we do our analysis, the sooner the better. And I guess, my own personal bias, and it sounds like maybe there's some support on the committee, is, I think this is something we want to watch. I don't, you know, again, I, I wouldn't bring Allison in early November to grill her, but I would like to understand, what are the tactics of looking at, are the kids eating? And are they trying things? And what's our strategy?
Well, we just heard this morning that, actually, it doesn't really matter who or what school, but the school was sent home a communication from the food service, which it said, you know, you must tell your child that they must take both the food and the vegetables. Well, I don't know about you, but I had one that would, but I had one that wouldn't take either one. And if they, and if he did, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be consumed. So I, I mean, you, so that, that's how strict the guidelines have gotten, is that, you know, people are now saying you have to tell them to take it. Well, I don't know if that strategy works. So that, so it's not just us. I think we're in maybe slightly better shape, because we've got a lot of new going on, and we're trying to get some new equipment that would put in some things that would really go overwhelm. But it's, it's definitely something that is causing a lot of discussion across the country, in every public school food service program.
Well, it's going to cause a lot of angst, and I think until we as parents can figure out why a child up until age two will eat anything you put in front of them, and then by age four starts being so selective, then I guess we'll all have a handle on, you know, how to feed and raise children. But it's a quirk, it happens, you know? And if you give them chicken nuggets at two, they're going to eat them in the 12th grade. I mean, what are you going to do? I think as parents, you get frustrated, and whatever you put in front of them, as long as they eat it, you let them do it after a while. And unfortunately, it's, it's part of parenting, it's whatever, but for somebody to say, well, you have to pick this or that, I got to tell you, Deb, that's not going to fly, wouldn't fly by.
But that was in our school, it was in our school.
No, I know it, I know it.
I was kind of amused by it, I'm like, well, I, I certainly won't be doing that.
That was actually, that actually came out of the food service group, basically telling the district that that's the only way you'll get reimbursement by the federal government.
Well, then, you know what? I think sometimes we have to, that's too much.
That's what we said. So we may actually advocate the opposite. I don't know if we have any student observations. Willie, Megan, you can borrow the microphone if you want to just roll it down, but I'm sure this is a topic you're interested in. Some of the other ones, maybe not, but I am positive, this is a topic that might be interesting.
I actually just have a question. Is the, like, portioning, is that the same throughout all the schools?
Yes.
So like, is...
No, it's different elementary versus high school.
I didn't know if it was like, if we were, if all three school, all three school levels were getting the same portions.
No.
Have you noticed it less?
I've noticed that it's a lot less.
Yeah. It's, it's according to, like, developmental age, like, guidelines for middle versus secondary difference, but in many cases, it's, it's all real small.
And Willie, you don't have to answer this if you don't want to, but how are you reacting to the fact that it's less? Are you bringing more snack? Are you going home hungry? How do you do it?
I've bought lunch three times this year, as opposed to buying almost every day last year.
Well, that's big volumes. That's big volumes.
But that's, that's...
Yeah, thank you.
It's amazing what you can get in that backpack, right?
Exactly. And I'm not saying we should increase sizes.
Well, you can't.
Right.
We're not, we're by law prohibited from doing so.
But I think this merits some analysis.
Well, I just want to reiterate, the portions are not our choice. It is a federal law that just took place this summer. So we could all want to do that, but we would not be allowed to do that.
How many days have we been in school so far? A lot. You've only bought three times compared to every day? Seriously.
Well, right, but I, but remember, our, our, our food actually purchasing is up. So we hope to just keep making volumes.
All right, so I'll move us off of this again, since I got a second.
No, I appreciate your comments. They are all valid, and I appreciate, you know...
Megan, did you want to make a comment here?
Um, sure. I don't really buy lunch, I usually bring lunch every day, but I've noticed a few people mentioned how really good the food is, even though the portion sizes are really small. But I've also heard a few people mention how much they don't like it. I think it really just depends on person, so.
Right. They're trying soups, they're trying lots of things. So I think eventually, we'll be able to offer things that we can, that are within the guidelines, that also offer more, that are also tasty. But it's, 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 um, it's, the portions are a challenge, on the meat and the grains. Everything else, there's no restriction.
You're never going to offer a meal or meals that's going to appeal to everybody. You know, I felt like a shot out of a cooker in my house sometimes, that, you know, what you thought you were going to serve, and, and what everybody finally wanted, as they were sitting at the counter, was two different things, but there's probably going to be a happy medium. You just have to find it, that's all.
Right, within the guidelines. You know, actually, I was going to bring this up on the other, about how successful the lunch was that was provided last Thursday from the, for the employee day at the Cal that it occurred. It was incredible. And it was, they got nothing but rave reviews about the variety, the taste.
And the quality.
The quality.
I will say, at least the one thing that we know, because we've changed our buying patterns, is that the, we're buying a lot more fresh, local fruits and vegetables from a garden, a large farm out of Rehoboth. So we know for a fact the stuff is fresher, as Alison noted about that. We are buying a lot less of the pre, you know, the old hamburgers everybody loved, but those are pre-cooked burgers that came in a process that, that you did. We're buying less and less of that, and more real chicken and real, you know, protein products that we're putting out there. So, again, people need to try some of these things, but they will realize eventually that there is a, a real difference in the quality of what we're putting out there, hopefully.
It, it is easy to notice the difference in quantity. It is, takes longer to notice the difference in quality. And just, you know, the whole, I would say, the chocolate milk controversy in school, the kids that we banned chocolate milk, we didn't, and it was the other first day of school. But there, you can't serve it in more than eight-ounce servings. Those are pretty small. So for some kids, that's like two big gulps. But we're not allowed legally, nor, nor can we purchase anything that's chocolate milk in larger than an eight-ounce socks. So kids notice that. The things that they're upset about, and that we notice, are very noticeable, which is the quantity and the size. And that isn't us, it's the federal guideline.
Part of it's portion, part of it's a lot of beans on the plate.
Yeah, literally.
Which we're working on some of.
Can they buy more than one milk if they wanted?
Yes.
Yes. We just can't serve a portion, a serving size.
Bigger than eight. Okay, so if they wanted two, they could buy two.
They could.
Okay.
We were all excited when Allison came on, I don't think any of that's changed.
No.
I think it's just a matter of we're working through the growing thing. Bev, if I may, can I, just a second. Debbie, we have so many different sets of goals.
We do.
Strategies.
We do.
I think sometimes you, Amy, and Bill may be the only ones who can keep them all straight. When I look at the three that you've proposed here for the district related to culture and climate, do you think of these as internal, climate internal, versus how the community looks at things?
Well, these are going into our strategic plan, once they're approved. This, this, the purpose of this page right here, draft that district-wide, is to, is to, that's the, that was in the strategic plan, that by this fall, we had to have district-wide culture and climate calls.
But if, for example, I said to you that we heard some nice things across the community, I think all of us, that Foxborough High School got into the top 50, and, in the most recent, but that there's still interest in, you know, the district continuing to pursue excellence and all that.
Absolutely.
Would that be the kind of thing you would think about in the district-wide culture? Because to me, what we've got listed here are fairly, what I think of as internal types of things. Would we consider wanting to say anything about how the community looks at, you know, we've got a lot of people who are very, very proud, and should rightfully be, of the Foxborough school system. We have others who say, hey, that's great news, you're making progress, and I heard this myself, I suspect others did, great, great news, you're making great progress with the high school, how, how do we keep going? Is that the kind of thing you would envision here?
Well, the thing is, though, what our charge was, is to collect the baseline data, which we did, and included in that is how parents and students and staff viewed academic preparation. There were tons of questions on that. Those came out fairly high. They didn't point to that as a goal. So our, our job is to take the data seriously, and to say, okay, we collected, we got pretty high ratings for how parents viewed their child's academic preparation, homework, all kinds of stuff. If you remember, when we reported the results, the one funny thing was that parents had a very high reporting rate, that they, vast majority of parents, they helped their students with homework nightly. The kids said, hardly ever. My parents hardly ever helped me with homework. So that was kind of the funny, but we, we asked a lot of very specific questions about academic preparation, staff, parents, and students. Those areas did not point to a need for a goal. They, we had pretty good ratings and all of that. So it didn't beg a goal. These are the things that really stood out, in our district-wide data.
Good, thank you.
So it doesn't mean we're not going to continue to work on that, because, as I often say to principals, we're still going to try, we're still going to be working on everything.
Right.
But what are we really going to focus on, that we're going to focus on in a public way, and maybe in a more intense way?
Well, and to acknowledge, I mean, not that it's a deficiency, but identify it's an area that we need to improve upon.
Right. So, these are, these are the things that really stood out, that we, we looked at our baseline, they were the lowest baselines, and were the things that most people seem concerned about. And I think also, we have to remember that culture and climate, as I read from the thing, is a very broad concept and a very broad definition. It's not just about academic preparation, in fact, most of it is about the environment that supports positive academic growth, and a positive learning environment. It's all about the things around you that will help make kids successful. And those things truly are, quality food, teachers having time to collaborate for the purpose of improvement, and parents feeling that the child are in a safe, caring learning environment. So if you think about it, those three things are extremely important to academic progress. So we're working on this, if you will think about it, the supports and the underlying structure that will help kids be more successful. We don't necessarily need to have a goal about academics, because those came out pretty high, but these are the things that will all help that.
Thank you.
So do you need a motion to accept these?
Yes. That would be great, and then they will be embedded in our strategic plan, and we'll go from there. Because that, that was a three-year plan, we're, we completed first year, so these will be the things that we'll be working on over the course of the remaining part of the strategic plan, and as it gets reinvented, these may too, we'll see.
Katie, motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Dana. All in favor? Five, zero, zero.
Many thank yous.
And another one of our favorite things, acceptance of a donation.
Yes. As you know, the Inventus Company is one of our most, if not the most, supportive and generous supporters of the public schools. And every year, for the past, as long as I can remember, they've come before you with specific things that they've supported, donated for, whether it be summer math camp, whether it be the art department of the high school, computer aided design, indeed, these are exactly in that venue. So I do want to say, though, on October, let me just look at the calendar, at, at one of the Board of Selectmen meetings, I believe it's on October 16th, so it would be the night, I believe, after this next school committee meeting on the 15th, the selectmen meet, the night after we do. And they are going to recognize Inventus as a very wonderful supporter of the town, and anybody who's benefited from it can go. I personally will go, 7:15 on the, on Tuesday, the 16th, so if any of you would like to go as well. And what you see before you is an exact, a classic example of what they've done. So I'm asking the school committee to accept two separate donations from Inventus Systems Incorporated. One is in the amount of $1,703.45 for the CBAD, which is the, you know, the computer-aided design course, to purchase a digital camera and the accompanying equipment that's around the camera. That's one. And then the second one is for the CAD department to upgrade the SolidWorks 3D software. We saw Mr. DeBona was here last year, showing the 3D software and how, and how it produces the 3D objects that kids can design, and then produce using the machine. That is the software.
How much is that?
So, that is $1,500 exactly, for the upgrades to SolidWorks 3D, for, again, CAD department.
Would you like two separate acceptances?
Yes.
I'll make a motion for the first one, $1,703.45.
For the CBAD digital camera.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Five, zero, zero. And now, the update software for CAD.
I'll make a motion.
Katie?
Second.
Okay, Bruce. Thank you. All in favor? Five, zero, zero. Thank you very much, Inventus.
We will be sending them, as we do, a letter of thanks, and being very specific about it on behalf of all of us, so, thank you very much.
That helps the school committee.
Yes.
Massachusetts Building, School Building Authority, MSBA funding update, Mr. Yupman.
Hey, actually, you have four copies of the same thing, it's only supposed to be one page that you have there, so, just concentrate on the first page. The, back in, in April, when I reported to you, the top line here has a small typo, previous projection was $16,788,000. That's what we thought at that point would be our, our closeout cost after doing everything that the school committee requested, the auditorium lighting, the locker rooms, the paving, and so on. I'm happy to say we're slightly underneath that, by about $7,000, so we're coming in at $16,000, $16,788,000. And at this point, virtually everything is 100% complete, with the exception of the data room, which has been structurally built, but we still have the electronics side of it to do. But everything else is complete.
Is the, what's the schedule for that?
That will actually probably be completed over this entire school year, because we have a number of different things we need to do that we can't do during the school day. So we'll have to use breaks in the school year for electrical changes and, and things of that nature. But I would anticipate by the end of the year, we should have the, the room fully up and running, and be able to start to make the, the switch into that room. This will be about a two-year process, as far as switching over, because there's so much data that we have to, you know, equipment that we have to move to get this thing to work. The, you know, the surplus now is not quite as good as what we had hoped, partly because the state has refused to revisit their reduced number. When we originally were approved for this project, the state was going to reimburse us $938,000, $9,938,700. They revisited that after our first bids came in, and reduced it down to $7,226,000. At the time, we had the understanding that they would revisit it if any other changes happened, obviously, in either direction. They have since told us that's not their way of doing things anymore, and the $7,200 is the highest number we can get. Which is a little disturbing, because it's never been the way they've done the program. Unfortunately for Foxborough, we started this program when they started their new venture into this, and they have continued to morph over the last four years, the process. So right now, I'm, I'm really working hard, we have an outstanding balance, they've paid us $6.3 million already on this, which has been audited, cleared, and closed. We have about, just under $900,000 that, if we're going to get the full funding of the $7.2 million, that we have to get them to agree that it is all structurally what we're supposed to do. We feel we have more than that, that, that they should be agreeing to, but as I think I said in one of our last meetings, they have been holding on $500,000 worth of, you know, information that's been put, put to them, that they have said that they think is, is not eligible. We met with them once already, they've agreed to revisit all that, we redocumented all[1624.24] of it to show them how it's just part of the project, and these things happen when you don't have, you know, obviously, walls open and stuff. So my anticipation is we should get there, but it's not going to be an easy process to get there. That being said, if we're 100% successful, the project will turn back a million, forty-three thousand, and we've already turned back a hundred and thirty-two thousand, which was all of the rebates that we fought with the utility companies. Those, that hundred and thirty-two went to the general fund, so that's already, you know, will be certified as part of free cash at some point, but the million forty-three is what we're fighting now for the remaining balance.
What was this originally bonded for? What was the bonding figure on this project?
Ten million, six hundred and five thousand.
And as you call it out, that's the town share.
Correct.
That's what that means.
Right.
And Bill, the nine hundred thousand that's remaining for us to get reimbursement from the state, is that specific arts specific?
No, it's, some of it is just general contracts that hadn't been paid out as of the last time they've done a review. As you hand stuff into them, they continually review, so there was nearly seven hundred thousand in the general contract that hadn't been forwarded to them yet. So that's going through, plus any of the changes that we made. You know, a simple example, which I use because it's probably the most obvious of all, you know, we spent just about two hundred thousand dollars in the end, having to replace all of the window sills that were damaged. Now, we didn't replace them all, we only replaced about 50%. But when we first tested the building to make the decision to go forward with the project, they took off a number of the sill covers around the building, all over, in different places, not in one place. Every single one that they picked, the sill underneath it was 100%, not a problem with it. The assumptions the architect made were great, we'll take the covers off, we don't have to do anything. We then obviously get into the project, we strip off all the covers, and 50% of them are totally deteriorated, there's nothing there to hold the window up anymore. And the state basically, in their first round, said, well, that was an owner decision.
That was what?
An owner decision to make those changes. The obvious thing is I couldn't put a window on something that wasn't going to hold it. So we've shown them that we actually did testing, we did, we had a lot of stuff, we documented it very well, so I'm very comfortable on that one as an example, but it shows you how almost ridiculous they're being in the way they're looking at things. And it's really, it's an education for me, I'll tell you, in having to deal with it this way because it's...
Have they changed at all?
Oh, they've changed.
The members of their board?
Oh, yes. We haven't had the same, matter of fact, we're on our fourth or fifth internal person on our project, so we've had no consistency there.
Yeah, that's...
So it's a hard project. I think, you know, like I said, I think for most communities, if they're going through an 18-month project, it happens fast enough that they'll get the changes. Where ours was, we're renovating an existing building, and we're going to go and do this when we can, and it ended up being a three and a half to four-year project. You're going to expect changes on the state level, it's just been, this has also been amorphous, you know, a matter of a program too, so it's been a little bit hard to deal with. But like I said, in the end, we'll get where we need to get to, it's just a little bit more effort.
Persistence.
Bill, so are you saying then that the anticipated reimbursement, though, will be the seven point two million number? That's the bottom number?
Yep.
Well, that's a big change. That's a lot of money.
Two point one million dollars today.
A lot of money that they're renegeing on.
And yet, just to be explicit, what we're expecting from the town does not need to go up.
No.
Because of the state reducing. I just want to be, make that point.
Right.
In fact, we're still going to have a million dollars left.
Right.
But I agree, Martha, that's a lot of money.
That's a lot of money. You know, you'd think there'd be some honor among thieves and that they would, you know, honor what somebody else has already agreed to.
Right. Compared to the millions of dollars that it does take for a new high school.
Oh, yeah.
And that's what they used to do. I mean, they used to, the rules have completely changed, and they didn't exactly say at the beginning that the rules were going to change drastically, but...
And we've done no flims.
Yeah, but we went in with a much better understanding and appreciation for what we were going to do compared to what they're letting us do or what they're, you know, just going to hand us at this point, so that's unnerving.
Do you need us to approve this, or this is just more for information?
No, this is an update, just so that you know exactly where we stand. Like I said, I mean, I think the one thing that I'm very comfortable with is the fact that our expense side has not changed. We have done exactly what we said we were going to do. We're hitting our numbers, we're not missing our numbers that way. So it's not that I could have controlled the expense any differently than we did, it's really I can't control, you know, the reimbursement side of it, which is a little bit disturbing.
We're going to try one more time. I think I mentioned in the last meeting that the Superintendent Association is hosting a, what I, we hope will be a two-way conversation between districts who have recently finished projects and the MSBA folks, so, you know, I signed us, I think I might have been the first one to reply, yes, we'll be there, so Bill and I are going to go to that. So we're hoping to maybe, hope the logic gets communicated, but not sure how hopeful we are, but we will be there.
I think the other thing that I really want the public to understand is that when we undertook this project, it was with certain goals and aspirations and demands that were put on us at the time when we started this project, with an understanding that X amount of dollars was going to get us X amount of repairs and whatever, and that we probably couldn't have picked a more opportune time to go into this project because people were starving for work and a lot of our things came in under budget. Now, that being said, when we took the second walk through and saw some of the things that still needed to be done, I don't think there's anybody who's sitting on this committee or who has sat on this committee that didn't understand, we went after the things we had to. That didn't mean that there weren't other things within this building that needed to be addressed, and I think we made a very conscious decision to go back, look it over, and try to do some of the things that still needed to be done, but weren't in the original work order or whatever, because, point blank, we just didn't think we could afford it at the time. So I think we've been, as a committee, you know, Bill is heading up on the building side, I think we've done a stellar job of identifying other things that we could do with the money that was still there. And I think it was to our advantage, to the town's advantage, to try to keep doing as many things as we had to at this school, because it would be stupid for us to keep going back, looking for CIP items every year, knowing that the funds weren't there, and that you were going to have to pick from a list every time as to what you did or did not do. So I think, I think this committee deserves a lot of credit for being able to stand up and say, wait a minute, there's still other things here that need to be addressed. And I think anybody who walks through this building and takes a look at what we've done, you'd be hard pressed to say it wasn't money well spent.
And I would say, you know, in that same vein, I mean, this is, you know, I've been on the building committee for 13 years, we've done, you know, the, obviously, the middle school, as well as the high school, we've done some work on the tailor of the roof and stuff, the joint public safety, but we typically, as a building committee, don't want to hand back to the town a building that's not 100%.
That's right.
And so to your point exactly, I think, I really know when the community gets a chance to be in the auditorium, as an example, for one of the town meetings, they will now see what they got for their money, and it is distinct how much better that facility is, and it's not just a school use, it is a town use there. We have truly met the needs under, you know, the equality side as far as the gym facilities now for the women versus the men's side of it. When you walk into the two of those now, you really see that the women have just as good a facility, if not, you know, a top-notch one that the men had on their side. And again, that's part of the laws that we were supposed to be meeting when we finished this whole project. So, you know, I think everybody in the, both on the building committee and the school committee, had a tolerance that 20 million dollars was probably the max number that the town could live with. I think in the end, you know, we're still looking at less than 17 million dollars, and we've done better by far with now having less maintenance, less issues to deal with going forward, which I think just benefits the entire community as a whole, and still taking advantage of the timing, because we're still just coming out of this pricing. So if we were to try to do some of these things later, I guarantee you, the pricing would be much higher, and then, again, there's no benefit to the town there either, so...
And you're right, it's much easier to maintain what we have down in the gym now compared to before. I mean, if you went down there and you swept, it wouldn't make any difference, because it was in such disrepair, it was a joke. I mean, when we walked in there, I was like, are you kidding me? Holy mackerel. And I think that was one of the best things we did at the end, was to go in there and clean that place up. I mean, seriously, would you want your boys in that locker room? I know I wouldn't. So I just, you know, I don't know, we did what we had to, and I think we did it in the best interest of the students, the district, and the town.
Well, and health ones.
Oh, yeah.
And with a reason.
And with a reason.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill, for that.
Thank you very much.
All right, school committee discussion of Turfs Up Field Project.
Yeah. Well, as you know, Adam Chair, the reason for this agenda item being on tonight's meeting agenda is to give the school committee an opportunity to discuss the current status of the project, to be informed of the current status of the project, and to ascertain the level of school committee support for the town's project. So just to remind people, a little bit of background, the Turfs Up Field Project was actually begun by a group of community members several years ago, a community group, who applied and won a $200,000 grant from the NFL to build a turf field, and also raised some money privately. With the downturn in the economy, that kind of came to a little bit of a halt, and, but school officials have met periodically over the last several years, both when Chris Modus was here and in my tenure, with the Turfs Up Committee over the past few years, to see who the status is and to continue the discussion, the dialogue, whether it was ongoing or whether it was temporarily suspended. And we most recently met again last spring, and again, a couple of weeks ago, to see what the status of the project is. So the purpose of tonight is for you to find out what the status of the project is, what the options are out there, and, you know, without, obviously, it's not my role to discuss financial options, it's a purview of the committee, but I just want to remind people, I'm going to offer a reminder of how I feel. Overall, the reasons why I believe that there is interest in this project, both on the school side and on the community side, is because, if you think about it, we just talked about the high school renovation. The high school was built around 1970, it opened in 1972, without external athletic facilities, probably an oversight back then, or maybe they couldn't afford, I don't know, I wasn't around in 1970, I couldn't tell you the reason. Forty years later, the high school's been almost fully renovated, and still, the outdoor facilities have never been addressed. So I feel like this is the time to consider addressing it or not. The full high school campus, there should be a full and complete high school campus in a public high school. It is your flagship, people use that all the time, but it's odd that your flagship has wonderful now indoor facilities, but as we talked about the last meeting, we're the only one in the hock without an onsite athletic, full athletic facility. So we really, I think, as educators and school supporters, have to consider that both the indoor and the outdoor facilities are important to the life of the school for students. And I think it probably is an oversight that both when the high school was built and now this renovation, that here we are, basically, a new high school all over again, still with nothing addressed in terms of the outdoor facilities and the importance of that in the life of the school. So the, a true community use field, which is what this Turfs Up Committee has proposed and what the NFL would support, is a field where the community would use it as well, that we want people of all ages and all groups to, it's their field, and everyone will be using it. And that's really what happens in most communities, is that the high school is a focal point for the community, for outdoor activity, for wellness, and that it is a true part, the outdoor facilities of high school isn't usually a true part of the community, really isn't here because we drive over there. So that's my piece, and I think we're going to have an update on where the Turfs Up project is from Mr. Jim DeVales, and it's really for the committee to discuss.
He looks vaguely familiar.
He looks a little familiar.
Has it been two weeks already?
It's been two weeks.
We just handed Bill a thumb drive with a couple updated slides on it. Thanks for having me back, it's been a couple weeks. Jim DeVales, I'm representing Turfs Up, and when I came in front of the school committee, I'm sorry, with me tonight is Peter Glick, he's from Sims, five Walden Park, I'm trying to get you company, Sims Mini-Meeting, who specializes in athletic facility, known, Peter, for a number of years, coaches kids and vice versa, he's a resident, he's volunteering as civil engineering, and Karen Slavie, who's been at it from the beginning as well, kind of public community outreach. We just met with a Turfs Up group down the hall, just to kind of give them an update and from the small committee meetings that we've had. So what I wanted to do was share where we've been since the last meeting. If you remember, we had brought to you about $260,000 in donations in a grant to be used for a turf field in town. We also brought in about $100,000 worth of free engineering services for a turf field. We presented options all through town, we ended up at the high school because it made a lot of sense for the reasons that you just articulated. And since then, the feeling has just been stronger by the month that it needs to be at the high school. So when I came to the committee last meeting or so, presented an option, I'll go through these briefly. When we got the grant, if you look to the right, that's where the, I orientated all these a little bit, so they're kind of sideways, but it fits better on the screen. So in color is where the turf field and the lights that we proposed, next to the Hersey Field and behind the high school, on top of the old septic fields. We did an engineering study, we said it fits very well, and basically utilized the best back access around the high school to get into the field. Then, when we got our legs going and got the engineering done, we did the survey and found out there's a lot more room back there, that we could put the turf field plus 150 spot parking space, plus an extra grass field, a practice field. So that's what we came to the committee with last meeting. And if you look at this, this is just a little colored on the same plan, so it actually fit in pretty nicely. And the discussion that we had at the school committee meeting was, if we're going to do this once, or the town's going to do it once, let's look at the master plan, and for a community and a school to use it, should it or should it not have a track? So you had asked me to go back and do some thinking about putting a track in, which basically is a lot larger, and that's what's shown is an eight-lane track. Whether we need an eight-lane track, you know, that's something that we'd have to talk to your athletic director and you guys, is it six lanes or eight lanes? But basically, that's the size that the, that shows the field, the track, plus, that's 1,500 bleachers, 1,000 on home and 500 on visitors. And that's standard, some schools go up or down a little bit, but now we're starting to look at, you know, is it for the community and the youth, or is it for the high school or both? So you look at bleachers, is used for graduation, it's used for football. You're not going to fill bleachers with youth sports, for soccer, lacrosse, field hockey, things like that. So now it's starting to slide into, you know, high school and youth for the amenities that we're adding. So we actually did the redesign, put the track, the field, the bleachers, the lights. We eliminated the back field, because there's just no room for it. To the bottom is about 125, 130, yep, I tried this, but it doesn't, yeah, there you go, the vanna. So that's the parking, so if you drive in the back, you could park there, walk across, and the top right is some type of an entrance feature, and we're showing some handicapped accessibility parking, and then maybe a monument that says Community Field or Foxborough, if it's named after somebody, a nice entrance feature, yep. And then as you come in a little bit, the, we put a room for a concession stand, a modest area where you could have a ticket entry, concessions enter the field, and then there's also, there'd be some access to the Hersey Field up on top. So it started to be a really nice thing in the back. So when I presented this, it was a smaller group, Bill and Martha and Debbie and a couple people from the Turfs Group, and Randy Scollins, the finance director, came, sat with us, and we started saying, well, you know, rather than putting it in the back, where it kind of gets lost, it's darker, it's not easily visible, things can happen, what if we put it in the front? What does that mean? What does it mean to the cost, to the accessibility, to taking up fields? So we looked at different areas, and this is starting to look at the whole campus of the high school. You've got the building in the middle, in the back, where we showed the field originally, and then as you go towards the IGO, there's different opportunities to put it in different places, either on top of where the baseball field is, or past it, or sliding on towards where the IGO and the booth area is. So this is a little blurry, but if you bear with me a little bit, if you come in from the top, that's the entrance to the high school, and as you come in, that's the, going up and down is the parking area where the band practices. If you look, that's where it's striped, and to the right of that, that's where the baseball fields are. So this option would be right on top of the baseball fields, in the bottom right, it saves the softball field, but really goes into the outfield. So you would eliminate the baseball and the softball for this option, but you would have a field, the bleachers, the lights, the track, and it stays outside of the tennis court as well. So the baseball and the softball would actually switch to the back of the high school, and this small committee that we worked with initially thought that was appropriate, because you've got the baseball and softball, if you could do a parking area, you eliminate where it is now going into the major parking area, the fly balls and things like that. And the field becomes a focal point. As you come up, you see it, it's central, it's campus, and it kind of gives a pride as you enter, and it's not lost in the back. Putting a little color on that, to the right, again, that's the field, the bottom is the tennis courts, we'd stay out of there, you have room to access it. Visitor bleachers on the top, home bleachers on the bottom, and then to the bottom right, labeled it a practice field, but that could easily be the field hockey field, or it could be another soccer field, or something like that. And here's a rendering that we did of the entire high school campus. So this starts to give you a picture of if and when this is complete, it completes the whole athletic, high school, parking kind of feeling of the high school. So I put that together so you can kind of see the big picture.
Did you add more parking?
The parking on the main campus is, stays identical.
Yeah.
The parking on the back is new.
That's over there on the left.
Yep, on the left. That's 150 spaces, and that would be used for the baseball, softball, and maybe the Hersey Field. Right now, what happens is they park in the main and walk along that drive to get to the Hersey, so that would accommodate those areas.
We actually already have that parking started. We've got about 50% of it right now is a gravel base, which is being used by people who use the Hersey. So we've been able to get the people off the curved outer roadway that goes around the back, and they now park there because there's a cut through that goes right to the Hersey Field from that back parking lot.
Jim, is there any concern about the width of the current access road and whether that would need to be widened?
Around the high school? On a day-to-day, probably not. On a peak time, like a varsity football game or something, maybe, I haven't looked at it, but, you know, lighting and width, I think, would have to be looked at, but not many people use it now. If it's going to be used for baseball and softball, it's somewhat limited, you know, during the games, and it's one or two seasons. Now, if you wanted to look at your high school in context to your neighbors, we put this over in Ariel, so you start to see if the field was up in that area, to the north, to the top, you've got a substantial tree buffer, and you get the church on the other side. So it just kind of puts it in context, and the baseball fields, when we're... So it just kind of puts it in context, and the baseball fields, when we're redoing that in the back, you've got plenty of buffers to neighbors, and you're really against parking lots and commercial uses. So it shouldn't be too, it shouldn't be too many issues with the neighbors. Now, the, just at this meeting that we had before this, talking to one of our committee members about field hockey, I think they use the baseball field right now, the outfield of the baseball, so if you wanted to put another field down in the area where the baseball field is, you could probably put another field down there as well. So, it's a starting point, it's, you know, I think it fits in very well where we show it now, and thanks to the committee that met last week, gave us some direction, and, you know, is it gonna be done tomorrow? No. Is it something that, if you put the field in now, in context to master planning, I think down the line, you're gonna have a really nice campus, a really special place. And then how do we get there? That's the big question. At some point, I'm sorry, go ahead Martha.
Jim, would that area be big enough for field hockey? Do you have the tennis courts there?
What's shown right now is small, but there's, yep, it's, it would, it could elongate, and if the bleachers weren't built right now, it's plenty big. We would take up that whole area. And, you know, talking to some representatives of the soccer, who run the soccer, the soccer cup there, I think that whole area would want to be grass, and they'd break it up and run their programs there. You could get a couple fields there.
Jim, just a couple questions. Did you count the number of parking that you're proposing versus how many parking spaces there are at the Ahearn? You go to a football game at the Ahearn, you know, you've gotta start parking out on the main streets, because it's so packed. And I'm just trying to anticipate, you know, with what you've designed here, how the number of parking spaces we have and the ones that are proposed, how that would equal to the number of the Ahearn? And would we, are we anticipating, you know, just that overflow of traffic?
Yeah.
It doesn't just happen on a Thanksgiving, it happens at, you know, the home games.
I believe the spaces that we have at the high school is many more than the Ahearn.
It's about 50%, the front-free parking areas, which are the student parking area, closest to the football, the small staff one in the middle, and the other combination student-staff area are about 50% more spaces than what we have at the Ahearn.
Okay.
And that doesn't count the new lot behind the school.
Right, right. But as far as who would use the stadium side of it, the front parking is substantially more than what we have.
Okay.
And the nice thing about this, it's central, you would be able to park at the booth?
Right, at the rec.
That entire parking lot.
So that makes more parking.
And at the Igo. I mean, you can park and walk in on the off-hours, where you don't have that opportunity at the Ahearn, because once you're outside of that ring road, you're into private property or you're on mechanic street.
So, you talked about this meeting that you had, so, and you're talking about the use of these other fields for field hockey, baseball. Was the athletic director at this meeting? Were there people representing the high school sports?
Yeah, I reached out, the athletic director wasn't able to make it that night, but that meeting was based on the direction I got from the school committee that said, put a track in. So we spent a week, I say we, I take the credit, Peter, designed the track and field, and then we brought it back to say, is this something that you're looking for? We've got-
Brought it back to who?
I think Bill. I brought it to Randy to say, if we go in this direction, where's the money coming from our finance director, to kind of talk about the merits of that. Martha, because she's the one that asked for the track, I don't know who else was in the meeting, but it was kind of, before we came back and wasted anybody's time, are we going in the right direction? So, that's-
It wasn't a meeting in the sense that it was a brainstorming thing, like, what's the alternatives, what do we need to think about, this type of thing?
And more so about the location.
Yeah.
Because a lot of people had expressed concerns, if you remember this meeting, about in the back, is that the right place? It's supposed to be community field, it's supposed to be accessible. And I actually hadn't thought about it until this last school committee meeting, when that was brought up. And so, it was really just to explore, is the project still viable? What are the options? Is that the best location? Were to be proposed?
That's why, that's why I'm questioning who was there, and was there a representation from the athletic director who would know?
No, she couldn't come, I did speak to her. But she, you know, had a conflict that night. The thing is though, we, as Jim said, we're not involving too many people in planning. This is not a project that's been voted to go forward. So, it's not necessarily the appropriate time to get everybody to pitch in all the different logistics. I mean, I have spoken to her, I'm the liaison with her, and clearly, it is in the interest of the athletic department to have athletic facilities on campus. And you know with the last meeting, and we put it back in the packet, she had provided the background information on, how do we compare to other schools? Is that in your packet? How many teams do we bus to other locations? What does that entail? All of that information was in your packet last time, and it's back in your packet today. So she's been involved in terms of providing background information, but I don't, I didn't feel it's been appropriate to get her in front of a committee saying, what do you want? We're not there yet. And, you know, so, I did invite her to the meeting, but she was, she had a conflict.
So, we're, and I've had follow-up discussions with town finance director, town manager, advisory committee chairman, on how we go forward, or what the different options are. But at some point, I gotta say, we're kind of at a crossroads. I mean, the community Turfs Up can only do so much, because it's not our property. We're providing the, again, the soft costs, and the money to get it going, and the master planning, and the designing, but we need some direction from the committee, or the school committee, on how you want to proceed, or what you want. If you came back and say, that's nice, over the next 20 years, we'd like to get that, we'll put the field someplace where we're not ripping it up to get something that we missed this time. So we'll provide you those services. But I think we need to hear back where you want to go with all this.
You know, back when we put in this high school, you have to understand, we also had the Taylor School, we had the Robinson Hall School onboard at that point, were mine as two schools, but they were well within the mix, and what the town could or could not afford at that time. And unfortunately, it's like when you build your house, you build what you can afford, and then later on, you build what you need. And I think that's where we are with the high school, is, you know, what do we need at this point? This is, as far as I'm concerned, this has been a three-quarter high school from the day we put it in, because it did not have everything that you need. You know, field hockey has been put in, the baseball and the softball came in, and were revamped, and whatever. When we did the Ahearn project, and I was onboard for that, we had to redo the football field at that point, because of the drainage, because of the field, whatever. So we were able to, at that point, do some renovation on that field. That field, again, is not gonna last forever. The track around it is not gonna last forever. So do we keep dumping money into that? Do we keep transporting students down there? Or do we try, once and for all, to make this a whole high school? And I think we're in a position, we're in a unique position, in that we're probably the only ones around that don't have a field at their high school. We are not whole. And this is an opportunity for us to move this forward. One of the things that we did talk about at the meeting the other night, when we were trying to figure out, you know, how do you pay for this? And because we're renovating what's there, this committee probably is well within their rights or whatever, as a school committee, to turn around and reallocate that money. Now, do we want to do that? Do we want to anger people? I think there's enough support within the community that, you know, from what I'm hearing, I don't know, anybody else's phone's ringing off the hook, but mine aren't, but the people that I've come into, I've come across, and whatever, are very supportive of this, that they want a turf field, because, you know, they go to other communities who have less money, less options, and they all have turf fields, and we don't. Which puts our students at a little bit of a disadvantage, when they do show up at these fields, and we don't have that here. So, I think we do need to take a long and hard look, how are we gonna pay for it? Are we within our realm of being able to reallocate this money? Because it is, quote, "part of, if we do this the way we're proposing it, or looking at it," in renovating this. Now, I know, on the town side, they're hoping without hope that, you know, this money's gonna get turned back, and that it's gonna go to the town project. I don't know. My allegiance right now is to this committee, to this school, and to this district, and making this school a whole school. You know, whether or not the rest of the committee wants to go with this, I don't know, but I think it's something we really need to take a look at. And, you know, if we're gonna do something, and we're gonna walk away from a project, are we gonna walk away with it still being three-quarters? Or are we gonna try and reallocate and get a field from whoever, whether or not we want to do this? My, my position is that it's time to make this high school whole, and for many reasons. And I think it's long overdue. We're not gonna probably have this kind of an opportunity, with a little bit of influx money from the NFL. If we don't move on this, then I can tell you right now, that money, as of April, will be gone. They've already had one extension, I think, Jim.
One year extension.
And I think that money, that's a lot of money to walk away from, and I don't care how rich you think you are, or what are the priorities you have. And I think we need to take a long, hard look at what we can do, and how we add to this project over the years, how we, you know, maintain it, whatever, but I don't want us to have a missed opportunity. And I think, if we don't look at this together, if we don't decide what we want to do with the money that was here for this project, then it will be a missed opportunity. My feelings.
I think you bring up a good point, Martha, which is, how are we gonna pay for this? And I think that we really need, if we're gonna have a discussion, we have to be real about it.
Yeah.
And we have to look at the money, the numbers, we have to, I mean, like you said, you know, there's other projects in town as well. And, it's beautiful, I love it, I love the concept, I love the idea of it, but I think we have to do due diligence in looking at all the different angles. I mean, we didn't include this at the beginning of this project, as much as I wish that we had. Does that mean we don't take this opportunity? I'm not saying that. But I think that we really need to know, it's like anything, you go into a store and you're gonna buy something, you need to know how much money you have in your wallet, and what it's gonna cost at the end of the day, and where you're not gonna be able to spend money somewhere else. So I think that we need to look at that, and we also need to get input from people. I mean, yes, we are the school committee, but we need to hear from the community. I mean, my phone may not be ringing about whether they want it or they don't want it, that doesn't mean there aren't people at home that have feelings about it, and, you know, want their voice heard. And I think that we have to be, you know, sensitive to that, and cognizant of that, and make sure that we give people an opportunity to weigh in on this as well. So, that's my thoughts. So I don't know how we go about getting from here to there, to try to figure out how we can make this happen, but I think we need to take into consideration, in my mind, those variables.
There's certainly not enough money to do the whole thing. That, I can tell you right now, there isn't, okay? That's gonna take further. But I think for us to at least get the turf part of it in there, and get this project going, you've gotta start someplace, Katie. And I think, you know, Jim has gone above and beyond when he started this whole things, and I remember when he came in here with a smile on his face, and said, we can do this. He still has a smile, but, you know, with a heavy heart, I think, at this point. Because, you know, what you think you can do, and what you can do, unfortunately, is two different things, and nobody counted on the economy and everything else. But I think, now that we're all talking about it, we're all trying to think, how can we make this happen? I think you're gonna find that more people, and I'm being optimistic for Jim at this point, that more people are gonna jump onboard, and they're starting to be intrigued about it. And I think some of you who have young children, who are in the system, and who go off to other communities, and you see what they have and stuff, I'm sure you come back and you go, why don't we have this? So, I think, you know, for somebody who has now sat on this committee for almost 15 years, I'm telling you, it's time to really take a hard, fast look at this, not a fast look, but hard and fast, and find out, what's our beginning point? What can we afford right now? And where do we go from here? But if we don't take that opportunity, and like you said, it wasn't in the project, because when we presented this project, it was with the demands put on us for the facility of this building. And, like I've said over and over and over, we couldn't have done this at a better time. If we had known then what we know now, about what it was gonna cost us to do this, I can tell you right now, Katie, this would have been one of my priorities. But because of how it was presented to me, and when we walked through this building, and what was done, my first, I mean, heating, electrical, roof, that was, you know, windows, that all had to be done, because that was gonna save us in the long run. Number one, we wouldn't ruin the building, and we needed to maintain it and reduce our costs. And I think we've done that, and we've done a lot of other things on top of it. But it is time to make this high school whole.
It sounds to me, Jim, like what you're asking for is, for our committee to take on the leadership at this point, from what you guys have done, and help support you, and certainly with your guidance, and add a little bit of muscle behind getting it further along the process. Is that, am I close?
It's close, but I think you're gonna be surprised with, and Martha, I couldn't agree with you more on the feeling that, you know, and Peter can attest to it, we do this for a living, the schools are getting knocked down, this is all part of it, Foxborough, you know, you look at the Hawkamook and all that. The question is, it's not how, or when, it's basically where is this thing gonna go? And I think it's, you're pushing against the tide if you're gonna try to stop it, because every place you go has one, and there is advantages to having it. The difference, though, is, and I said this last time, I think you guys have the ability to vote on this tonight. Last week, I think you had the ability, because it is, you can slide the money over, it's a renovation, and it's under your jurisdiction. But, as much as I'd like for you guys to do that, what I asked last time was, to support it as a warrant article, and there's a couple reasons. Last week, the last time I was here, was because I just thought it would be nice for the people to vote. And I, your phone is ringing, my phone is basically saying, you know, when is this thing coming? So the support is there. Having been on the advisory committee, there's a process that's been set up, and you finish a project, it goes back to the fund, it's another capital project, it goes back to the fund, and that's the way it does. To short-circuit that system, and just have extra money and spend it, I think will win the battle on this one, and you'll get your field. But phase two, I mean, the field is about a million, the lights, the field, the fencing, the earthwork, and all that stuff is about a million. The bleachers and the track and all that stuff is probably a $3 million project, and there's no surprises, that's almost rule of thumb nowadays, with the bleachers and the press box and the utilities. You get your field, because you can vote it, but you go back to phase two, and the people are gonna say, you know, we didn't get a chance to vote on this last time, where's the money gonna come? I'm not gonna vote for it. Maybe, but you're gonna have problems with the advisory committee, and I know that, and rightfully so, because that's the process that's been set up, and it's kind of short-circuiting. And I think the feeling that was on everyone's minds when the school project got done, 20 million was a lot, 10 million of ours, 10 million of the state, if there was money left over, then it would go to another project. It may be this, or maybe town hall, or maybe the girl's school. But to not let that process work out, I think, I'll probably take a hit, I'm sure you guys will take a hit, we'll get our field, but it's gonna be difficult moving on. So what I'm asking is, if the school committee can give us some direction on what you want to do, we'll bring up the plans a little further, get cost estimates, estimates done for you, but support a warrant article at the Fall Town Meeting, which will be the first-
First of, around the first of December.
Yeah, I think, I don't think we can do it on a Monday, because there's some conflicts, but it might be a Tuesday, I think it's the 11th. But if the school's behind it, rally the support that way, and get the town to vote it through a warrant article. That way, the process can be vetted, like all the other warrant articles, with the advisory committee, with the selectmen, with the school committee, everyone takes a say in it. And if the people want it, it'll go through, and I think it will. If they don't, then it's not a community project, and it kind of dies. But I think that's the way that you have to approach it.
Jim, where I was going with that, first of all, short answer or short comment is, I agree with that approach personally. Where I was going with that was, if you're looking for the school committee to try to help shepherd this through the next phase, I think, I think we're ready to do that. I don't know what's changed, if anything, well, I think nothing has changed from your last presentation, when I think we had consensus that we supported this. We continue to appreciate the work you and your team have done, from my perspective, and the superintendent's gone on record saying she supports it. Clearly, we do, you've heard Martha speak eloquently about why, there's a lot of reasons. So I think, what we could probably do tonight, I'm just off thinking aloud, is, I think we could say that we'd continue to shepherd this forward. It's on our property, as you talked about, it's something that we can, that we probably should have a fairly strong hand in. Personally, I do think, there's nothing that you've said tonight that makes me change my opinion from what we said last time, which is, a warrant article is probably the right way to do this. I believe in my heart that we would get the community's support, because of all the reasons we've talked about. We are, you know, very lucky that we have this million dollars extra from our project. We are, you know, very lucky that we have this million dollars extra from our project. I think that does make that very attractive right now. Yes, there are other ways to use it, but the intent was, this was for this, this building. But I do think you're right. I mean, I, I don't know what's changed from what we talked about last time, which is, let's put our case to the public, do it the right way versus, you know, a ramrod kind of a thing. And if we, you know, explain, I think, the right way, the support and the options and why, and that a million dollars from our funds can take care of this, I, then, then the public speaks. So that's my own take. But most importantly, I guess, is, you know, you guys have done a yeoman's work getting it to this point and, and I understand and reson, it resonates with me that we probably need to help you take this now and support it. And I don't know any reason why we wouldn't based on the comments that we made last meeting and again now.
Well, I, I do have some concerns. I mean, one, you're talking about two phases, which maybe I wasn't paying closer attention to the first time you came, but I think that kind of information has to get out to the public. And I, I would not feel comfortable taking any kind of vote tonight.
I wasn't suggesting we do.
Okay, well.
No, I, I was, I was agreeing with Jim.
Well, Jim had made that comment that we could take a vote tonight, so I, I just want to be clear where I stand. And you said you agreed with him, so.
No, hang on, excuse me. What he just said was, he still thinks it's the right thing to, to go to the town warrant.
Right, yes, I hear.
And what I said was, I agree with that.
Yes.
I don't think we should take a vote tonight.
Okay, good, I'm glad to hear that. Because I, I think that we, we have it on our agenda tonight, a discussion, and I think that we should open it up to people coming to a school committee meeting to discuss it further so that they have an opportunity, you know, either to support it or, or not to. I mean, yes, I agree, I think it should definitely go as a warrant on, as an article on the warrant to obviously get a real consensus of the, of the community. But I think that we need to see hard and fast numbers, I think we need to see the phases, I think we have to have literature for people to, to look it over and to have an opportunity to come and ask questions instead of just watching it on television before it even actually, you know, gets on as an article. Then.
I have information, just to my own edification. If the committee decides tonight to support as a warrant article, I, I'm just confused about whether another meeting where people come here to support, it, it's a community project, it, it requires support beyond this committee because it's not going to be the interm, so wouldn't, wouldn't the forum for people coming and saying whether they support it be town meeting?
Absolutely.
I think all you have to do is decide whether to support the warrant article. I don't think this has to be a venue about debating it because it's a community project that requires funds beyond what the school committee can offer.
It would be similar to any other warrant article, it would go in front of the advisory committee, there would be a liaison that would reach out, we'd make a presentation to the advisory committee that asks the questions, we'd come in front of the school, well, it would be your warrant article, but as far as, just as far as the phasing.
Yeah.
As far as the community part of this, the youth sports, don't need the bleachers, don't need the track, because there's no youth track, there's no, this is, if you guys want, you guys meaning the school committee, want Phase Two, I will design the turf to respect that the future stuff can happen. But if you don't want Phase Two, then it, it ends there. If you want more information, we can provide it, but I'm not, I'm not here saying, you know, it's all or nothing. If, you know, the turf field could have been in the back, it could have been down at Hayson Road, I think it belongs at the high school for many reasons. The bleachers and all the accessory stuff is nice, but that's your project, not.
Not the turf project.
The turf project. But talking to Peter, we'll continue to design and help you with that. But if that's what the, you know what I'm saying? If, if you want it, it's theirs, but I'm not making the sell for that. But I'll make sure the turf fits in with respect.
Right.
And that the space is available.
Yeah, exactly.
But, but it's, I, I think though the discussion, you know, it's, it's school, it's community, it's both. So you're, you know, it's, it's going to be on the school property, so it's school, it's going to serve as a function to unite the, the, the school, and again, talking about it being whole, which I agree with you Martha, but yet at the same time, the community is going to be responding it. So it's really both. So to say that someone can't come and talk and share their, you know, have a discussion about it at a school committee meeting, I'm not sure if I really get that. Yes, you have town, the town meeting to have that occur, but it's also going to be on the school property. You're talking about Phase Two will be on us, right? That'll be on the school. So again, we're going to be shouldering the cost of that, so that'll be, that'll be a cost of the school. So I, I, I'm, I'm not so sure whether it's really.
I actually had some questions about that too.
Sure.
Because my understanding, to make sure I'm, my understanding was that because some of the additional funds would be raised by community groups, sports groups, whatever, that they could fundraise or contribute toward a specific thing like bleachers or whatever. So it's not necessarily all on the schools in the future, it's really going to be an ongoing truly group effort on the part of the community and the schools to say which piece is what's taking on. So, is that correct?
Yeah, and I think that's what we talked about a little bit, you know, when I first came a couple of weeks ago, it was easier to finish the fundraising if the bulk of it was done. And we'd asked you for the bulk and it went in this direction of now we're, you know, redesigning in different places. In our small group, I had said, "I still want to reach out to the community," whether it be, you know, bathrooms in a concession stand with something that says "Community Field," whether it be bleachers, but I think the community needs to get involved for a couple of reasons. I don't want to lose fact that this field is not all high school, it's a lot of youth sports that are going to be using it. So the community has to come out there. And the easy road is to get it, you know, a warrant article and people forget about that stuff. But I think there's going to be room for the committee to keep working, the turf's group, to, to do outreach. And, and we've kind of been holding that, there's some pent up outreach until we get past this crossroads. But I, I think, and I wasn't trying to say us or them, but we're not proposing bleachers and lights and everything that has to be all decided now, all those details. What we're proposing is the turf in a place where it doesn't have to move later because you've looked at all those other things from a master plan. So, you know, in five years, 10 years, two years, when the bleachers come about, we build them around it and not have to do things twice, that's all I was saying with that.
Excellent.
Janet, did you?
I, I do. What was the timing for a warrant article for the Fall Town Meeting? When does the warrant close? So.
We're, tomorrow night, the finance department is giving us some funding plans.
Uh huh.
For the town hall and things like that. And I think, that's the second, and I think the meeting after that is going to be close to.
So our next meeting is October.
A member of the audience is saying four weeks.
At the end of October.
End of October Larry, thank you.
End of October.
So, so we have.
That's, that's pushing it because we have Thanksgiving in between.
Right.
And, I mean, you know, that's.
But, but we have another meeting, I mean, we have another meeting in October.
We could even have a special meeting if we had to.
Right, but we have time, we have one, two weeks from now.
But already, the community has already given financial support. Therefore, the only way I see it is that we must involve the community. This is not, and I do not see this as a school committee vote alone. I think we have to bring this to the people. They're the ones who've already committed to, and paid and fundraised for this turf. It already belongs to them, we need to include them in further dialogue. And if we take that position tonight, it leaves you and your committee time to do PR.
Well, it doesn't leave much time.
Not much, but, but if, but if we make, make this available so that people can look and feel like they are having a part in this decision, it's the only way it will work.
I think we're saying the same thing because what I'm saying, because it's a warrant article, it goes to the advisory committee and that whole process, it goes to the selectmen and the selectmen will vote on it, it'll go to you, but since it's your article, you know, but that whole process is.
We, I think we need to respect the process. It's been set up for years.
I, I just want to backfill for a minute. When, when we started this project, we, we bonded it, we had expectations, we had a dollar amount and all that. And I can honestly tell you that I never went into this project with the idea or the understanding or the stipulation that if there was even one penny left over of where it was going to go or what it was going to do. So I don't, I, I'm a little bit taken back by the fact that, you know, I've heard the town say over and over that we're going to take this leftover money and we're going to use it for this other project. And that, that just gives me pause for thought because I'm like, what are you doing? You know, first of all, you never said this in the first place, it's not what we anticipated when we started this project. And I'm not trying to be selfish or mean spirited, but where does somebody else come in saying, "We're going to take your money that's left over and we're going to do this with it"? I, I know that would probably have to go back to town meeting and hopefully that's, that's the way you do this. But I, I just want it clarified that when I started this project, when I brought it forward, when I anticipated what was going on, it was never fund this project with X amount of dollars so that if X amount was left over, it would go to this or that or whatever.
I agree with you Martha.
That was my intention, I'm sorry Bruce.
No, I, I agree with you. I, I think, I think rather the way, you know, I look at it is, we thought it was $20 million to upgrade this facility. Through great work by a lot of the staff who have been recognized for such and thankfully some, some other good things that happened, we came in under budget. And, and look what we can do now. We can, we can do this.
We can, we can finish this.
Right.
You know, so I, I don't, I guess in my heart of hearts and having done this for as long as I have, you know, it's like the money that's in my house, I can do what I want with it. Now, not, I know that sounds awful, but, you know, there, there comes a time and you have to draw a line in the sand and you say, you know, "That's your project, this is my project." Just because we didn't put this in the first go-round didn't mean somebody wasn't thinking about it, we just knew we couldn't afford it, so why would you even bring it up Bruce? Seriously. Would you, would, me and they would have thrown you right under the bus and trampled you forward and backwards about two or three times if you ever said, "Hey, wait a minute, what about a field?" Seriously? They would have been laughing at us. And maybe they're laughing at us now, I don't even know Bruce, but you know what? I've been here long enough, I've paid my dues, I've paid attention, I've always advocated for the students, for the district, for the faculty, making sure that everybody has what they need to do their job, then we hold them accountable. And I think it's time to hold ourselves accountable. Do we or do we not want to finish this project? And as far as I'm concerned, finishing this project is making this high school whole. Maybe we've never thought about it because we didn't think we had the money.
Well, I, I, I do agree with you Martha, that when we first started the project for the high school, the frame of reference was definitely.
The needs.
The very, you know, let's fix structurally what we have to, the inside, the, the mechanics of, of how this building operates, let's not look at the bells. I remember when we were going to buy a bathroom and they said, "Well, we'll save more money if we don't change the tile on this, but it won't match there." I mean, you know, I mean.
And then we found out we could do it all.
There was a lot of, there, there was a lot of.
There was bathroom tile discussion.
There was. There, there was a lot of talk about, "Let's not take on anything else that we absolutely do not need." So the idea of a field was not even in our radar.
It wasn't even on the radar screen.
No, I mean, that, that much is very, is that, is true.
That's true.
So I think people do need to understand that when the discussion now is about the field and, again, it wasn't in the original plans, but our scope of what we were looking at was.
Very narrow.
It was very narrow.
And it was very cost effective.
And we were given instruction, we were given instruction to look at it in a narrow way because we didn't want to build something huge and big and put a huge cost on the taxpayer that wasn't, you know.
Well, but, but at the time Katie, the prob, the biggest obstacle we had was money. And what could you do with the money? And thank God, things came in the way they did and it came into our advantage so that we didn't have to tile half a bathroom, we were able to do the whole bathroom. I mean, it, it just would, when you think, at this point, it's almost laughable. Some of the stuff that we were able to do because of people wanting jobs and it worked to our advantage. Now, you know, we've got a clump of money left over, we don't have as much as we thought we were going to have because we've run into some obstacles. Surely the fact, I wonder if we'd be, you know, in this position if we, we had that $2 million that the, the state has kind of reneged on as far as I'm concerned, I, I didn't realize it was that high. So we would have been looking at a $3 million surplus. So if we kept a million dollars and did the thing and then gave back 2 million, would everybody be happy? Yeah, they'd be dancing in the streets for God's sake. But now because, you know, the state's reneged, we only are going to have maybe a million left over and, and we want to, I want to, I'll be honest, I want to make sure that this gets done, you know, am I going to take a hit for it? You know, I'm a big girl, literally, I can, I can handle it. But, you know, I think sometimes you do have to take a stand. And my stand is, it's time to make this place whole. And somehow, we as a committee have to somehow come together and understand that you can't have a field halfway across the town. It's absurd. And how much more money are we going to dump into that field? Well, we could be dumping it in here and saving on transportation and, I, I don't, maybe I'm just crazy, but, you know, seriously, it's time.
I love your passion. So.
Do we, Bill, would you know the answer to this question? Can we go to town meeting and ask for a consensus or would this really be better placed as a warrant?
I.
Now, I mean, can, could, could we ask for a consensus?
You could go ask for a consensus, but the, the reality here is, my own personal opinion is that this is not a million dollar project.
No, it's not.
There's additional funding required and if you truly believe the concept is that you're going to need to do this whole thing at some point, the right way to do it is what Jim said.
Is through the warrant. Actually, to have the turf field proposed as in this PowerPoint, I was going to slip and say slide, but that would date me.
Well, that's a slide.
Oh, that is a slide, okay. That, that's the ideal place.
Mm-hmm.
If, if we go just the turf field, it should be there. And the baseball and softball, I mean, I mean, swap those two places. But the more we can expose the public to this right now, between now and the December meeting, is the more support we could garner for the eventual projection.
Well, I think we have to gear ourselves up to go to the PTAs and present it because that's where your base is, that's where your, let's face it Bruce, that's where the votes are going to come from. You know, we're not, I've lived here long enough, it all depends on who gets their vote on, what you're going to get. I don't have a problem with making a warrant article, I really don't. What I have a problem with is that we need to step up to the plate and present this and see what the people want. You know, it's like anything else, if you want it, fine, if you don't, fine. But at least we'll know once and for all. But I think in my heart of hearts, the young parents within the system who are exposed to, you know, our future athletes and what they want to come, it was like when we did the Ahern Project, I don't know how many times I said to Vinnie, "Vinnie, go take pictures. If you think the people in the elementary school want their kids in this school, when they come to middle school, you'll get your vote." That's what we did, that's how we presented it, sure enough, they came out in droves, we got it. The same thing comes here. We need to bring this PowerPoint to the PTAs, to the senior citizens, to everybody that we possibly can. But we've got to get our dancing shoes on because we've got to do it work.
No, we've got to dance now.
So why don't we make a motion to work in support of the Turf Sub project and, in support of putting it on town warrant? And then I think we're making a statement as a committee that we're behind this, you know, but we think that it needs to go to the community.
Yes, we want to include the community.
I mean, if that's appropriate and that's consent, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All right. All in favor?
Let's do it.
All in favor? 5-0-0.
Is that okay with you?
I think so. And what I'll do is...
See a new smile on his face? Take a picture.
I don't stop smiling.
See, he's got happiness.
The question is, you know, it's a warrant article, we've got a project, where does the money come from? So, I'll talk to the finance director tomorrow and have him check to see where the money can come from. He's got different sources, maybe it comes from the school project, maybe that's already in the works for the town hall, I don't know, but put this in the mix. He's presenting tomorrow night at the selectmen's meeting with a finance package for the other one, so...
Let me run this party. If, if we make this a warrant article in support of this project, is there any way to incorporate in that that it would be used, that the leftover money from this project would be used for it? Because otherwise, if you take this money and you give it back to the town, okay, then it can go anyplace else, and where are they going to come up with our, with our money that we have? You know, how do they reallocate that money? I don't know. So, I think part of the warrant article would be, can we reallocate or can we continue to renovate? Probably a better choice of words.
I hear what you're saying, and there's pros and cons to that, and to take a bond money and put it in the account and then do a warrant article, put it back, I don't think that vehicle is there.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not saying that. What is, why can't the warrant article be in support of this project in us using the money that's already here?
You're saying have it included in the warrant article where the funding would come from? I think this is an issue for Bill and for Randy, honestly, to talk and to bring back to the committee, because I don't feel like I'm ready to even respond and understand some of this. I mean, we need more information about this before...
Well, that's why I asked him, can...
But I think it's Bill and Randy. I think it's Bill and Randy that should be...
Well, he also sits on the selectmen's.
Well, he's not in that capacity though right now.
Yeah, we've got a $55 million budget, I mean, this, it's a big number, but this is, this has to fit into that whole process and the AdCom has to vet it out. And if we say we want it to be, or the school wants it to be from this leftover money and that's part of the motion, if that square peg doesn't fit in a round hole, I think we're going to be having to fix it later. So, I agree, let Randy and...
And Bill.
And Bill and the AdCom figure out the financing, what that avenue is.
Let that placement of the turf field...
Well, I would respectfully request that we get information as a committee, Bill, after you and Randy speak, because I think we need to know this before it just goes to the AdCom. I mean, we need to understand what the sources are.
And also, you know, we can call a special school committee meeting anytime we need to if we feel we want to vet this more.
I mean, you have a meeting in two weeks.
We have a meeting in two weeks.
You just voted to support the warrant article.
Right.
I think the details of it can come, you know, people can start working right away. And, you know, in two weeks, we should be able to provide an update on where we are.
And don't forget...
All you really have done is make a placeholder right now.
Right.
Which is the minimum that you have to do to even discuss it, because any warrant article could be pulled off a town meeting or can be modified up to the point where we actually publish the warrant. So, you've got a little bit of time here, but what you've done is just made a placeholder.
Well, and I think we've publicly stated our support for having a turf field, the reasons why, and that ideally, we'd love to use the $1 million left over to help support this.
And ideally, it would be there.
Well, I think that's the only location under consideration right now, because don't forget that it's part of the NFL grant is only, it is solely contingent on the fact that this is a community use field, not a school field, but a community use field. So, you know, to me, the access from the booth in the IGO side and the high school side, that makes it a true community field, and that's why, actually, originally, you were back up tonight because that wasn't a location discussed the previous time or even in the spring. So, this to me is the best case scenario in terms of the location and meeting the intent of the NFL by supporting it through their grant program.
And don't forget, this is not something brand new. This has been, you know, vetted by Jim and his committee, he's been before us before, it's been on two agendas. You know, I think, I learned a long time ago, people do read the agendas, they do know what we're talking about. If they have a vested interest or they have a negative statement they want to make, I think they'd be sitting here. Unfortunately, sometimes I'd love to see people who are in favor of things show up, but, you know, I might not live long enough to see that one. But I, it's, you know, don't, don't tell me that nobody knows about this project because they do. Okay? They know that we've been talking about it.
And it's been covered in the report.
And it's been, and it's been reported in the newspapers, so, you know, I think, you know, sometimes when you hear from people and it's positive, it's good, when you hear from people and it's negative, it makes an impact, but, you know, unless 100 people call me, I learned a long time ago, you're going to have a handful of people that no matter what you do, no matter how hard you try, they're never going to be in your, on your side.
Supportive.
Or be supportive. So, I think this is a great avenue. If we get it on the warrant article, then we've got to use our expertise like we did on this project and get out there and vet it.
So, I think just to recap it, I don't even recap it.
Sometimes we do.
If it's voted on December, then we'll use January and February, we'll prepare the construction documents and put it up to bid, and there's no reason it shouldn't be able to be under construction since February, March, April, May, and June, and get it ready for the summer.
Yes. And Peter, thank you for all your engineering expertise that you've been donating.
Actually, thanks to the whole committee, because you've been working on this how many years now? Three, four?
Well, they're up, they're down, they're up, they're down.
I just think so many people have worked hard. Regardless of the outcome, they've worked hard and it's time to decide if it's going to happen or not.
I got to say, because we just met over here and everyone wanted to come in and I said it's, you know, we don't need to show numbers coming in, but there is a, there is a big group behind.
The safety in numbers.
Coming in December.
There you go. All right, thank you all.
Thank you for your time. And your quality.
Yep.
And Mr. Brant.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, our next item is voting a school committee appointment, the voting delegate for the annual meeting.
I will make this motion.
I'm going to second it.
I know what it is. Miss Debbie Law.
I will second it.
Because she just absolutely loves doing this.
Especially when I try to get there on time, and I'll never forget the airplane planted right in the middle of the street going to Cape Cod and it's...
She couldn't get any farther.
No, well, I mean, it's not like, here's the detour and you go around one or two blocks down on the Cape.
I don't think there's any discussion, is there, Beth?
Is there any discussion?
All in favor?
We're taking over, Beth. You got it.
Congratulations.
That's awesome. How many years you been doing this?
I can't count that high, Martha.
You can't break tradition, Martha. We cannot break tradition.
No one has more frenzy than you.
I know, it's true.
At the school committee, the state school committee.
You have to come and watch this team. Team's going to go on Thursday and Friday. I don't. And actually, I, she signed up on the early bird too. So, you're saving money on both of us. So, I hope the rest of you can get down for a day.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, other, do we have other?
As you know, the MCAS results were released recently and parents got their results at home for their student. So, we've heard that the, we've seen that the MCAS results are out in the media, the generalized results for the state and communities. So, as we have, according to our past history, we're going to keep with our usual presentation timeline, and at the next meeting on October 15th, Dr. Berros will be presenting the general overview of our MCAS results and how we've done. And then, as we have the last couple of years, which has worked well for the committee, so unless you want us to do something different, speak now forever, hold your peace, we will do a two-part MCAS presentation like we did the last few years, where 15th will be the overview, and then the next meeting after that on November 5th will be the more detailed analysis where we invite the department heads and the directors, and that's where we look at summary trends and a little bit more in-depth analysis in terms of curriculum instruction assessment. So, that's our plan.
Great.
Sound good?
We've come such a long way, I don't know if anybody ever watched or saw the first MCAS review, let me tell you, it was the most painful thing I've ever been through.
Oh, I know.
You know, I had a packet that had to be at least this thick, that I must have gone through at least...
Four cups?
Oh, my God.
Four pots of tea.
No, at least 10 pots of tea. I didn't think it was possible to stay awake long enough every night to read through all this minutia, but it was, we've come a long way, and I think we've toned it down, we're not hysterical the way we used to be, and we take care of, take a much different approach to it, but seriously, oh my God, I don't think I would have lasted another term if I had to do it again.
Now, we just use binders for the teacher and superintendent.
Yes.
Right. And even that, trust me, will be refined.
I think Debbie and now Amy has done just such a superb job of presenting MCAS in such a user-friendly, understandable way, you know, for us and for parents, and so I think that speaks to both of you.
I think we've done a better job, though, in terms of expanding our definition of academic excellence and how we measure it and define it. And so, the logical follow-up to that in November will be that we'll come back where we used to do the baselines and benchmarks report, which is the more comprehensive vision of how we measure it. We are in the process of converting that to the district report card concept that we talked about through the strategic plan. So, we don't want to keep adding documents that seem, you know, not in concert with one another, so we're actually going to morph the baselines and benchmarks into the district report card, which would be something a little more background on the district and where we are that could be used by all kinds of groups, it could be real estate people in terms of how we're doing. So, we're in the process of doing that. So, that would be at the second November meeting.
Very good.
So, it's a logical three-step process.
It's much better.
19th.
Yes.
Okay, under, or actually, how many, how many tracks do we have? Six? I mean, lanes?
I have my note.
Do you happen to remember?
That's a trivia question, I think it's six.
Yeah, actually, I think it is eight, but I'm not positive.
I think for the MIA track meets, you have to have it.
Right, we had to have eight, so...
Well, I did, you know, it occurred to me when he said that, I don't, I didn't even know how many.
Well, I don't know because I can't run around them.
You need lanes. Not even the inside one?
Lanes, lanes.
The inside one, Beth?
One full lap at a running pace escapes me.
Yeah, you have to protect it.
Even on the inside lane, right? I'll split it with you, I'll do one half if you do the other.
I could do that. I could crawl it right now.
We do have to bring up the executive session minutes. It has been brought to our attention that there is no reason to end an executive session just for the approval of minutes. So, that we...
I think that's been a longstanding thing, that you don't have to go into executive session.
Because, but it takes too much time anyway. We should do it periodically.
No, it's silly, it's, what's silly about it is that we've got to wait for the whole place to get broken down, we've got to finish up what we're doing, go into executive session. It's not, it's crazy. What we do have to get...
But it's not, yeah.
It's not necessary, but what we do have to do is if anybody has any questions or concerns about minutes, would you please call Wendy that either Friday or Monday and have her make the corrections so that she can bring them to us that night so that we're not sitting here trying to, you know, reinvent the wheel because something's spelled wrong, something isn't right, somebody wasn't here to vote. I think we owe it to Wendy to show her that courtesy and call her and just say, could you bold, this is what I'm asking you to change, and bring that revision that night? It would make it much easier for us.
But we also don't have to do it after every meeting.
No, no, you don't have to do it after every meeting, but we could, I mean, how many executive sessions do we have? But when we have them, if there's nothing that's sensitive that we can certainly turn around and release, and that should be something that the chair and the superintendent decide.
Right.
So, if it's not sensitive material that we need to really take a look at and reevaluate, then you wouldn't want to OK those in public session. You would want to go into executive session. So, I think it's up to whoever's the chair and the superintendent to just say, you know what, we've got to wait for an executive session, or we need to go into executive session to do this, but there's no reason to hold back, but...
But not start doing it every week for the purpose of just OK minutes, passing the minutes. It's actually not a real reason to go in. We have only 10 reasons to go into executive session.
I would like to, you know, point out that the committee did, you know, in the past, not release minutes in a timely manner, and I would say that I would, that we need to be very, again, sensitive to this. And so, yes, we may not be told that we have to, you know, that it's a reasonable timetable for creating and approving minutes, and I think, you know, that reasonable can be interpreted in different ways, and I just do not want us to get into a similar situation. So, I personally would like to see us going into executive session in a timely manner to approve minutes, I mean, maybe not just for the sake of it, but, you know, we have, you know, at least once a month, I mean, I know it says 30 days here, I think that we, you know, I like our practice as it is, but...
No, but what we're saying is you can OK...
Well, we were doing, we got into a rhythm.
But you can do an open session, you don't have to have an executive session OK. What I'm saying is if it's sensitive material, then certainly we would most be going in.
Then we have to go into a second.
And we do it in a timely manner, that's not a problem. The problem in the past we had was we didn't always have executive sessions and we waited till the next one to OK them.
Right. So, are you saying then that if we're in a open session...
We can OK them.
We, no, and we decide...
As long as, as long as it is not of a sensitive nature, which binds us to go in to an executive session.
So, right, so let me see, because we spent a lot of time talking about this, trying to figure what this really means and what the procedure should be. So, let me try to, I just was writing down things as people were talking. So, this is where I think we are, but I'm not sure, so let me. So, Wendy will get the minutes to school committee members, as usual, prior to the meeting, both open session minutes and executive session minutes, minutes of all nature. As a committee, and certainly as a superintendent, we have to commit to reading them ahead of time. And if there are any typos or anything that has come up in the past or anything that isn't, that needs to be corrected, that we get that to Wendy prior to the meeting.
By Monday morning.
By Monday morning. And that we, from here on in, if you vote this tonight, because I'm not so sure, it might as well require more...
Well, this is by consensus.
We vote, right, that we vote to approve, that you vote to approve all minutes from both open and executive sessions in open session on a regular basis, whatever you'd say that is, unless sensitive materials, in which case we would have agreed ahead of time privately that this is sensitive material, which requires an executive session, which should be only occasional, because it only is recently that we're constantly going into executive session, and boards don't typically do that.
Don't do that.
And so...
Well, it's not a reason to, it's not one of the 10 reasons, and if it's of a sensitive nature, then we go into that executive session for the same reason we went in the first time.
And then, I think in the past, there's been some trouble about approving and releasing minutes on time, when it went on for months. But I do think, I've checked with some other schools, and some of them only meet once a month, so I think once a month is fine. So, if we, if we schedule, whether it's your first meeting of the month or the last meeting, second meeting of the month, if we just sort of put that on as a regular agenda in every other meeting and vote them all in open session unless there's been an issue addressed...
Of a sensitive nature.
That we can do it that way. Does that sound right?
Not a problem. It's reasonable.
Does that sound right to your understanding, Wendy? Because I know you've done a lot of this legwork.
Thank you, Wendy, for doing this for us.
But you can understand how I want us to be, you know, very clear about this because of what's happened in the past, and I don't want us to get in that, into a similar situation. So, I think that that idea of reviewing it once a month, I think, again, would be timely.
You vote all minutes in open session once a month.
Plan on doing it at the second meeting.
Of the month. I have something positive. I am obviously very, very proud of our French exchange and our Spanish exchange, and it is, ended up in some lifelong friendships. Now, in the 80s, Madame Isabel Mirta was one of the, my French, I'll call my French colleague, or from the French high school. She just recently has come and spent a couple of nights with Barbara Eaton, obviously saw me, we were very excited, we had a little reunion with Mr. Rex, and as I drove Isabel up, she said, first of all, she said to Olivier, one thing, one thing that was always bad was to drive into the high school, and I said, well, wait till you see the renovations. First of all, she can't believe this is the same driveway in the high school. But on the way up, and I pulled into the little parking right here, she said, this is my school.